All right. Good evening. Thank you very much, and thank you for your patience. We are starting a little bit late this evening as we have some technical issues going on over here. So I will call to order this meeting at 6:25 PM. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the school committee on November 9th, 2021. And first of all, I will just run through our agenda. We will begin with communications from school committee and the administration, the student representatives' report, and then we will move to public comment. And then for our reports and discussion items, we will have a report on the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, an update on the FY22 budget projections, including a memorandum budget update, special education tuition projection, and the FY23 draft budget calendar. We will then move into a superintendent evaluation and goal-setting process, building project and facility update, and then we will go to action items, including consideration of approval of the MOA with the WEA for 2021-22, consideration of acceptance of donation of Osmo learning devices, consideration of acceptance of the SCI grant, consideration of WHS PFA grants, and consideration of approval of minutes for July 13th, July 27th, August 10th, and October 12th, 2021. And then we will move into the chair report, superintendent report, and future agenda items, and next meetings and adjournment. So, let me just see. We are going to start with the student representative report this evening, and then we will move back into communications from the school committee and administration, if that is okay with everybody.
All right. Thank you, everybody, for having me here tonight. Unfortunately, Elle cannot attend tonight's meeting as she has prior commitments, but I'm happy to give it a shot on my own. Getting into a quick sports update, the cheer team had their competition over the weekend, and they're going to regionals in Billerica. We also had field hockey and soccer games today, and there's been a football game added to the schedule, which will happen on Thursday night. On this topic, the plans for the Thanksgiving football game at Fenway have been officially announced, which is students very excited. In other school news, as we mentioned last week, the NHS Talent Show will be held on the 23rd, and there's been a lot of talk about the fall play, which will be shown from December 3rd to 5th. Moving on, the quarter extension went really smoothly, and quarter one of the 2021-2022 school year has ended officially. Students will just wait a little longer to see their official report cards as teachers are finalizing grades. We've been very busy at student council in the past few weeks, working on Spirit Fair and our pie fundraiser. I'm sure you guys have heard enough about this fundraiser by now, but we think it's really important so that we can raise money for charitable causes in the future. For Spirit Week, we took a vote and decided our three themes that we'll be doing from Monday to Wednesday, which include pajama day, Adam Sandler slash dad day, and per usual, class color day. We're still unsure of what the pep rally situation is, but admin has stated that we will not be having it in the gym. They're very open to suggestions, so if you guys have any ideas, please contact them. Starting to wrap everything up, the Spirit Fair is fast approaching, and clubs are trying to push the use of Unipay to avoid the unnecessary transfer of cash. On a personal note, Elle and I are holding our senior swab drive, where we will be swabbing cheeks for a bone marrow registry called Gift of Life, and we're working with the Winchester Coalition on this, and it'll be held the same day as our pie sales. Finally, we want to briefly mention the Hawkinson High School mask plan. As you guys may know, they're running a three-week trial with no mask in school. Although I'm sure it's very complicated, we at student council have been very intrigued by this and would really like to know your thoughts, and if there's any chance of this possibly being implemented at WHS. This concludes my speech for the night. Again, thank you so much for having us here, and please feel free to ask any questions or provide any thoughts on previous comments.
I got one.
Mr. Nixon?
So, love how you wrapped up on the Hopkinton observation. You know, they made a lot of news because they were the first district having reached 80% vaccination rate, so they applied for that DESI waiver. What I haven't heard yet is sort of what is the consequence of that? Have they seen any rise in spread? I'd love to know, and I don't expect that Dr. Hackett knows, but it would be... I think you're raising a really interesting point. I think maybe the DESI 80% mark was in a way sort of a carrot, right, to motivate kids to get vaccinated. And I do think it's an appropriate conversation to have in Winchester, but I would just love to learn more about what's happened in Hopkinton. I also don't know, and I would throw this out to Dr. Hackett if he does, what other districts beyond Hopkinton have followed suit? Have they reached that threshold? Have they applied, and have they dropped the mandate?
I know, I believe, and this is only from briefly seeing it in the news, I believe Cohasset potentially, maybe in... Maybe there's another one or two South Shore communities.
So it would be interesting to understand, I mean, just because you can apply for the waiver doesn't mean you will. I expect there are quite a number of communities that are at or near 80% vaccination, and for any number of reasons, they're opting actually not to apply for the waiver. I think some communities are having the conversation, and maybe some are not having it. I don't know if they're actively avoiding it, but districts have a lot on their plate. But I appreciate you bringing it up.
Of course, thank you.
Can I ask a sort of question maybe of everyone, but maybe Mr. Nixon knows? The DESI waiver, the DESI waiver, is it... It's 80% vaccination rate of students. Is there any mention of community transmission levels?
Not in the DESI guidance, the DESI guidance, and it's building by building.
Okay.
So it's a building by building waiver.
I know Middlesex is still in the highest category of transmission, as is most of the state. I don't know if Hopkinton is in Norfolk County, but they're one level below. They're a substantial level. So anyways, we think about it, if we get to that, I would love to get the additional data that Mr. Nixon refers to, but also take into consideration what's happening in the broader community.
Yeah.
But I appreciate you bringing it up.
Thank you.
Mr. Hopcraft, I believe the guidance and Dr. Hackett, correct me if I'm wrong, also says it's to be done in consultation with your local public health department, with who your, the public health director is. So that may be where the information about transmission comes from.
Great. Thank you.
Any other comments from the committee? Okay. All right. Thank you so much, Charlie. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, Charlie.
Good night for bringing up.
Thank you for your patience with us tonight.
Yes, I appreciate it.
Get a jacket or something? I'm worried about you. You have a jacket or a sweatshirt?
I mean, it's nicer than it was last week. Let's just say that.
Okay, all right.
I'm gonna get you a Williams belt, man.
Night.
Okay. Thank you very much to Charlie Savage. And now we will just back up to communications from the school committee and the administration. And I guess just following up on what Charlie was saying. We are excited that vaccinations for five-to-11-year-olds have begun, and that the response seems to be very strong in the community. And we encourage the community to consider this as another means of keeping our staff and our students safe. Please remember that it is five weeks until your children or until five-to-11-year-olds will be considered fully vaccinated. And appointments are available through CVS. These are just some outlets, Walgreens, Mass General, your pediatricians. So please reach out. Let me just see. Dr. Hackett, do you have any clarifications around vaccination or test and stay?
I do not at this point, but I do know, I did talk to Jen Murphy in the health department today, and I do know that they are, she is actively working on trying to make the vaccine available for Winchester, both obviously community members as well as for students. So she's, she thought as of today she might know more by tomorrow. So I'm sure, as we have been doing, if something comes out, we'll get it out to the public.
Okay.
And pool testing is at elementary school and middle school? Is it at the high school yet, or will it be? How is that program going?
Is not as smoothly as we would hope. There's been some mix-ups or some resource issues with the program. Not on our end, and we've at times had to make the decision about prioritizing test and stay because that's obviously, that's the commitment, we need to make sure we're keeping kids in school. So hopefully, as we move forward, we'll, you know, be able to ramp that up more. And I think to Mr. Nixon's point and question, and I don't know the Hopkinton situation or any other school systems who have made the decision to not mask or to make masks voluntary, whether or not they have ramped up on their pool testing. Because I do think that that would be an important component of making that choice to see what the, just to make sure transition rates don't jump around.
And that was going to be my question, because it seems like that the rates of that in place might affect the ability to unmask too, and the participation rate of the students.
Correct.
Because otherwise, to Mr. Nixon's point, we're not going to know what transmission rates are like in Hopkinton if a majority of their students aren't participating.
That's right.
Right. And my guess would be that...
All about gathering data.
Right. Yeah, so.
And on that point, I'd just add that we also want to have, and I think maintain alignment with our town. So if right now masks are required in businesses in town, then I think we would want to take that into account as well.
Absolutely. Right, right.
Follow our Department of Health, Department of Public Health.
That's right. I mean, I think everyone's, there is not anybody in this room that wants to be wearing a mask right now, right? So as long as we can do it safely, and if we get to a certain point where we start to see the numbers with the five-through-12 vaccination now available, then we'll come back to the committee for a conversation about it.
Yep.
I do, just candidly, I do like the January 15th as a point in time to think about because of the fact that that gets us through the December break, people are traveling, all of that. We could be past that. What I would hate to have happen is making a decision prior to that and then having an outbreak, and then we're trying to get back into masks because I do think it will be difficult psychologically, probably, and mentally and emotionally for us to say, you know, we're going to make a change in the masking policy and then to have to turn around and re-implement. So I think that's one of the factors that's in my head as we kind of move forward.
And that's the DESI, that's the DESI date.
Thank you for clarifying. Yes, it is. And that doesn't mean that that's, they're going to make the decision to... It's a decision point. They may extend it. They may make a decision at that point where they're not going to mandate it as a department.
Okay. A few more communications from the community side. November 16th, we will, just as a reminder, we will have the Lynch Project kickoff with a 9:00 AM meeting at Town Hall Auditor, or Town Hall, and then a meeting over the day at locations that are to be determined, and then a 7:00 PM meeting over...
Six.
6:00 PM, thank you. A 6:00 PM meeting over at the high school auditorium, during which we can hear from the Winchester residents and from our project manager, project manager team, and from our OPM, and from our architect and engineer. And this meeting will be recorded. Further, let's see, November 10th, or November 10th, we have through WinPAC an executive functioning, an executive functioning session that is at 7:00 PM. And on November 15th, the Coalition for a Safer Community will be hosting "You Don't Know Me Until You Know Me" with Dr. Michael Fallon. I don't have the time on that one. But, let's see. And then last of all, this Thursday, November 11th, will be Veterans Day, and our staff and students will have that holiday off. And I would just like to extend a big thank you to the veterans in our community for your service and your sacrifice to our country. Anything further, Dr. Hackett?
Nothing for me.
Anything else, Mr. Nixon?
Could I ask you or the chair, you want to share some remarks about our meeting with the select board last night?
Uh, yes.
Article 28?
Yes. So, Dr. Hackett, or you want to, or I can, I can start. So, yes. So Mr. Nixon and Dr. Hackett and I had met with the select board at their pre-meeting for town meeting yesterday evening. And Mr. Nixon did a short presentation just answering some of the questions that have come up around the Carriage House and Article 28 with some updated information on rental spaces, options, and rental pricing that he has been looking into.
At the request of FinCom, just to be clear. In other words, there have been some, there have been some requests exploring alternatives, right?
Yes.
Yeah. And they voted.
Yes. And the select board voted unanimously to support our Article 28 for the $57,000 for design development of the Carriage House.
Good news.
Thank you very much. Okay, let's see. So next, we will move into public comment. And public comment shall be for a period of 20 minutes, and it's not a discussion, a debate, or a dialogue between individuals and the committee. It's a citizen's opportunity to express their opinion on issues on the agenda or of school committee business. And any individual wishing to speak before the committee shall identify themselves by name and address and shall speak for no longer than three minutes. And all individuals shall speak to the full committee through the chair and shall not address individual members or administrators. We offer in-person public comment. Seeing that we have nobody here for in-person comment, or in-person public comment, we can look to our remote public comment. And if you are, will be speaking through remote public comment, then we ask that you please turn on your cameras and give your name and your address, consistent with our in-person process.
We do have Susan DeLeo?
Okay. Thank you very much. We will elevate Ms. DeLeo.
Ms. DeLeo, you are muted. If you can unmute. We have you.
She's still muted, though.
You're still muted, Ms. DeLeo. Can you hear us? You are still muted. Can you hear us?
Oh, yes, sorry. WinCam is on a time delay, and I have to listen that way. Hi, it's Susan DeLeo, 24 Taff Drive. Thank you so much for allowing my public comment. Interestingly enough, I had the list of high schools or schools in the state of Massachusetts who have applied for and received the waiver. Hopkinton, Littleton, Ashland, Westboro, can't read my handwriting there, Westward, or Westwood, sorry, Algonquin Tech, Cottin School, Sarah Gibson, Norwell High, Midway High, New England Academy, and Corwin Russell Schools have all applied and received their waiver for the mask mandate because they are above 80%, much like Winchester High School is. Further, I would just like to comment on the school committee's note to follow the Board of Health guidance last night. Board of Health had a really interesting discussion on continuing their mask mandate guidance. And basically, it came down to the board almost voting to approve, to lift the mask mandate on November 30th as long as we stayed below 2% case positivity rate, which we've been at 1% for months now. So I think it's important for the school committee to know that our health experts out there in our town that we've been listening to are thinking about lifting the mask mandate as early as November 30th. And if we are to follow their guidance, then we should be looking at applying for waiver for those schools that meet the... will incentivize the group of parents who are now looking towards vaccinating our youngest learners in town, knowing benefit to those students who have all been so diligent. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. DeLeo. We appreciate your comment. And I will just note that the school committee has fought, has worked, and the administration, or our administration has worked very closely with the Department of Public Health on all matters around masking and around mitigation measures. And now we will move into reports and discussion items as we have no more remote public comments. And I will now close remote, or I will now close public comment. So we will be beginning with a report on the 2021 Youth Risk Behavior Survey with Mr. Jason Levine, who is our administrator of counseling, health, and wellness. And just as some background, the Youth Risk Behavior Survey is administered every two years. We just did it in the spring of 2021, so the previous YRBS was in 2019. It's administered at the middle school and the high school level, and the results are by district and compared to the Middlesex League. So, Mr. Levine, welcome.
If I could just open up for a second. First of all, I want to thank Jason for putting this together. You have, it was previously distributed to you. You know that there's a lot of data in here. There's a lot of information in here. And Jason will talk to what makes this year, or last year's survey a little bit different than prior years in terms of just what was available for data and with the group that we work with. I also would want to say that this doesn't have to be the only night you get to do this. So my suggestion, my humble suggestion, respectful suggestion, would be that you, we have the presentation tonight, clarifying questions for Jason. But if you want to kind of dig down on some things that, you know, in between now and the next meeting, if you want to, you can get those questions to Jason, you get those questions to me. And if we want, if the committee would like to have Jason come back just to kind of hit some of that information, I know he'd be more than happy to do that. So just to, just to start, only because, again, there is a lot of data in here, and I don't want you to think it's the last, the only opportunity you have to ask questions. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, Dr. Hackett. Yes, so...
Jason, can you grab the mic so it's near you as well for WinCam?
Thank you. So as Dr. Hackett mentioned, I began and prepared a summary for you all of the different pieces of the YRBS because there are so many differences this year, and to be able to fully explain to you the pieces of the YRBS that really came to the forefront.
I think I'm in control. I'm the captain now, Jason.
Oh, you've got it?
I don't, if you want to give me the USB plug-in, I can, you can do it from here.
Okay. So you're, got it.
I'm doing it.
How's it that you do that?
Oh, captain, my captain.
Okay. So, just a quick overview. I know that Ms. Polynese did talk a little bit about what the YRBS is and the history of it. The survey is developed by the Center for Disease Control. And in 2017, Winchester joined with a number of the Middlesex Region's school districts to combine to do it, to do the YRBS together so that there would be a sense of some local, local results. The national, the state and national pieces that are done don't give local results as we're able to pull from, pull from here. They only give state and nationwide results. Excuse me. So we contracted with a company, John Snow Incorporated, JSI Incorporated, that does, that is the ones who pulled together all the data and form it into a report for us. This, this time in 2021, we had all 18 Middlesex Region districts participate in it this year, or, yes, this year, which was the first time that we had all 18 districts participate at the same time. And, you know, I want to make clear that the YRBS really focuses on risky behavior and risky things that our students, our students engage in. So it's important to understand that some of this data to look at is pretty hard to, pretty hard to digest and pretty difficult to hear all the things that our students are dealing with. Not all students answer every single question, and that is some of the data digging that is done by JSI when they go through it, to be able to say, okay, so this student took the survey but left out a handful of, handful of questions and had to pare down the data for us. I really think it's important, as I said to you back in 2019 when I presented on our YRBS, that it's really important to focus on the trends of data rather than the exact numbers. I do think it's important to understand, though, that with a lot of these things, hearing that there is just one student affected by these things is difficult, is difficult to hear. And our obligation to be able to work with our students and support our students and families. The, all surveys were done remotely during, during the pandemic. This actually is not, was not a change from previous because once we contracted with JSI, we moved off of paper and pencil surveys and moved to computer-based administrations. The difference was in that the high school administration was done on March 31st during the pandemic, was on a... It was on a Wednesday, so it was a day at the time where our students were remote at that time. All done through their math, their math class. And at McCall, it was done from, done that same week, but it was done over the course of the week in the students, the students' virtual PE classes that were, that were done. So, on to some of our, some of our data. Oh, actually, sorry. One of the things I wanted to do first is the, the differences from, from 2019 to 21. JSI's report changed pretty significantly from our 2019 report to the 2021 report. They too shared that they had been severely impacted by COVID as well as supporting the local departments of public health to be able to run, run data for them. So, the report was certainly laid out a bit different than it had been previously. There was an overview and comparison of each question at the end of the report. That was not, not provided this time. One of the things that was provided that I thought was a, a good addition was that they did more, they did comparisons of gender, race, and grade comparisons on each question. So, it allowed, allowed to do more digging on individual questions. But there also was less historical comparison. And that's where I did a lot of the work and to see what, what were our responses previously in 2019 and 2017? And what kind of trend did that show us having? I also felt like, and you'll see in the, in the overall report, that JSI did a lot of combinations of, of question, of answers. So that when they would put together a graphic, the graphic often represented a, it represented responses to more than one question. So unless you did more of the onion peeling of seeing what, what were the questions asked and responses that were specific to that graphic, that is different than they had previously done. The last piece was that because so many schools, including us, had just come out of the school closure, they really focused on risky behaviors happening outside of school and didn't really differentiate between outside of school and inside of school because different, different communities had different experiences with when they were, when we were all coming back to school. Could take me a few slides to get used to that.
Don't worry about it. I got you.
So, these are the breakdown areas that the report broke down each, each of the question sub-areas into. The coronavirus pandemic, mental health, substance abuse, unintentional injury, violence, sexual behaviors and HIV, dietary behaviors and physical activity and organized activities. And so that's how I'll break down how I'm talking about each, each of those tonight, each of those areas. Participation. I'm really happy to, to report how our student participation has improved over the past, over the past couple of years. As you can see, we've really, we've really continued to, continued to grow from that 2017 number of eight hundred and nine students. This time, we were very close to where we were in 2019 with eleven twenty-nine students. And then at McCall, we had eight hundred and ninety-seven students in comparison to eight sixty-four last time. The, the breakdowns by grade and gender, I will certainly leave that for you to, to take a look at. If you have questions on it after, I'm happy to speak to them. On the coronavirus pandemic section. So, this talks, really talked about asking students to relate to how often their mental health was what they titled "not good." And they asked students to really talk, answer how often they had not good mental health over the course of the last thirty days, over the course of the last twelve months. And so, the numbers here really reflect that about thirty-five percent of high school students had indicated most of the time or always having poor mental health or not good mental health, and twenty-one percent of middle school, middle school students. Races and genders in this area were pretty comparable to the Middlesex Region. It did not, it was not lost on me that our gender queer students were more likely to report poor mental health. And, and that is not just specific to Winchester. That was across the Middlesex Region. But that is something, something of note. Our different risk factors that it talked, had our students identify some of the things that they're dealing, that they were dealing with and continue to deal with. Our highest noted risk factors are students losing family or friend, family members or friends during the pandemic, as well as having serious illness. As well, that came along with that was financial, financial difficulties and students being left at, left at home for significant periods of time. Our, this, what were called stress reactions were, our students were more likely to report those at the high school level. And the three most prevalent stress reactions were noted as feelings of anger, sadness, and worry, difficulty concentrating and making decisions, and changes in appetite, energy and desires, and difficulty sleeping. So, as you can see, and I'm sure that this is not a surprise to anyone here, that our students were greatly affected through the pandemic. So then, it now moves into the mental health section that, as I noted previously, is broken into a number of different, number of different sections. Our high school students were almost twice as likely to report poor mental health in comparison to our middle school students overall. Our gender queer students were twice as likely as compared to students identifying as male and female to report not having good mental health most of the time or almost always. And our female students reported not having good mental health most of the time or almost always at a higher rate than our male students. So then, from general mental health, then we're looking to move into talking about stress. And our, our students really talked about stress in a way of really identifying what some of the biggest stressors were for them. School demands and expectations were, were the leading cause of, cause of stress. And, excuse me, and busy schedules came out was the second, the second leading cause of stress. I think this is pretty comparable to what we've seen over the years in this and seeing the identifiers of stress. And this is one of the areas where we continue to, continue to do our work with our students. Keeping up with schoolwork or having to study things that they don't understand were two of the most stressful factors about school. And, you know, I think, you know, it can't go without saying to this that this is really one of the, one of the great reasons that we really focus and have spent so much time working on performance-based assessments and thinking about how our, how our students can make meaning of their learning, not just how are we communicating learning to our students. So, the next piece is on self-harm and suicide. Our, our rates on this in terms of middle school have stayed about the same in the past two years, while our students at the high school level in terms of reporting have come down by about thirty students. Again, as I said at the beginning, I think it's really important to highlight that the fact that our number is above zero is a, is a concern for us always and a priority for supporting our students and families. The grades where, where I could identify the highest prevalence of, of students having reported to have made a plan or a suicide attempt were in seven, nine, ten, and twelve. And that's just going through the aggregate of, of the grades reporting in each of, in each of these questions.
Okay, sorry.
That's all. So, so with this, you know, we always want to be able to look at what are our students' support networks? And support networks are such a valuable part of supporting our, our students' mental, mental health. And this comes from a variety of different places, whether that be from the school, whether it be from the home, or whether it be our students receiving some type of formal treatment out there. So, approximately half of the high school and middle school students reported that they feel like they have a trusted adult in the school that they could connect with and talk to about a, about a school problem, about a problem. About a quarter of the remaining students were unsure if they could identify, identify a trusted adult at school. And then, about two in ten or one in five students did not, did not feel that they have, had a parent or a family member that they could talk to about, about a problem that they're having. Excuse me. So, as you can see from this, it's certainly, it's certainly important for us to make sure that we continue to build our work around establishing trusted adults in all of our schools. About one in ten students reported receiving formal mental health treatment for support. And I think that there are a lot of factors that, that go into that. And I don't want to go through everything right now, but I think it's, it's certainly important to highlight that the state of Massachusetts and the nation really are at a, at a point of really running thin on, on mental health supports. Outpatient, outpatient counseling is often on a several-month waiting list. We, even if, even as our counselors are able to work with a family to get them a referral for, referral for counseling, get a family connected with interface, we still, we still are in a position of often having somewhere between a three and six-month wait period. And that's not specific to Winchester. That's specific to the entire state right now and even more outside of Massachusetts. In that aspect, I think it's almost scary to think that we are ahead of most states in, in those resources. Approximately one in five students could, could identify that they use a, use healthy coping strategies, that they know a healthy coping strategy and they consistently use it. I think that is an important thing when we're thinking about coping strategies because I know even, even among us adults, we could sit here and think about coping strategies that we might use when we're, when we're anxious. But do we all, do we consistently use it? Or when do we turn to, to, toward, bleh, turn to unhealthy, unhealthy behaviors or unhealthy ways of coping? These are students reporting it. So, you know, where they have not had the life experience to be able to really develop those skills, this is where it's really important for us to continue our work with developing coping strategies with our students and making sure they understand how coping strategies are used and when to use them. Approximately one out of ten students couldn't, couldn't identify any healthy coping strategy that worked for them. And so that really shows that there's a a big gap between those students that are identifying and consistently using healthy coping strategies and those students that feel like they, they aren't finding anything that works for them. There is still a large gap of students in between that are using strategies inconsistently and still trying to figure out what is, what works best for them. So now we move into substance use. And, you know, I think I, I'm not all that surprised, but I, alcohol continued to be the substance of, the substance of choice that the majority of our students engage in. This, this was prevalent at both the high school and the middle school. Obviously, much more prevalent at the high school. And as grades, grades increase, students' exposure to, to engaging in substance use also increased. So, our numbers are much smaller at the middle school. And then, as they, as the student increases in grades, there was more potential for them to be engaged in substance use. One of the things that really came clear to me as I was reading through the results was about students' access to these substances. And most, many students reported that they generally gained access to substances through their family members and through their friends. And so, that's really important to think about, that it's not just our students going out to stores to buy them. While inevitably, someone is going out and buying them, buying it from a store or getting it from somewhere, ultimately, our students are accessing them from their, from their adult support network and their peer support networks. Female students at the high school were more likely to report alcohol and vape use while the number was, was lower for males and gender queer students. So, this is where we look at our numbers for driving under the influence and driving distracted. Under the influence is really looking at, specific to alcohol and marijuana use. And you can see our numbers here were one percent and two percent respectively. Much higher than that, though, was cellphone use while driving. And I see, I see a number of you nodding your heads, and I wonder if that's not a surprise as our, our society as a whole, I believe, really has increased in that in driving, in driving distracted. But that is really something of note for us to be thinking about as we're really talking to our kids about their responsibility. as we're, um, really, um, talking to our kids about their responsibilities, uh, on the road, um, in keeping themselves healthy, uh, and, and of course, those other, the other people on the road. Um, a, uh, our female students did report a significantly higher rate of, um, using their cellphones while driving. Um, but, uh, um, but it was, uh, reported from all of our students. Violence. Um, as I said before, um, you know, there are, there are many parts of this um, that aren't, aren't easy to digest and this, this is certainly one of them for me. Um, we, um, we had thirty-three cases of students who reported that during, that during their lifetime, uh, they have, uh, they have had forced sexual intercourse when they did not want to. Um, that number has, um, has gone down from our previous, um, uh, surveys. But again, the fact that we even have one student that ha- that has dealt with this, um, uh, is certainly a loud message to me. Um, we have ninety-five students, um, who report, uh, being forced to engage in some sort of physical contact, um, anywhere from kissing, touch, touching and sexual intercourse when they did not want to over the, uh, course of the twelve months prior to, uh, uh, prior to the survey. Separately from that is electronic bullying and I, um, it feels like a large shift to go from sexual assault and rape to be talking about electronic bullying. The reality is they are both categorized un- under violence, um, and so that's, that's how we, we got to it here. Um, we had a hundred and three students at W H S and a hundred and thirteen at McCall uh, report having been bullied over the pa- over the past twelve months via electronic means. Um, and what, what is included in this electronic means, um, really was um, TikTok, Instagram, Facebook, Twitter, Twitch, Snapchat, or any, any other, um, social media apps that, that our students are using. Um, what really, um, spoke to me from this is the next point, that between ninety-one and ninety-six percent of our students reported that they in- indicated that they did not, have not reported that um, bullying to anyone outside of their home, uh, that they haven't shared it with someone at, someone at school or, or anyone besides the, besides their parents. The next section is on sexual behavior and HIV. Overall, um, our students reported engaging in less sexual activity, um, than the middle sex region. Um, our numbers were at sixteen percent at the high school and one percent of middle school students. Uh, similar to substance use, um, sexual intercourse also increased by grade level um, as student, as students, um, grew in age. Winchester students also, um, reported similar amounts of, uh, drinking before engaging in sexual activity uh, um, in comparison to our middle sex peers. Uh, so also important when we're thinking about our alcohol, our alcohol use as well. Um, and, uh, similar to the middle sex region, um, condoms continue to be the um, most widely-used form of contraception used, um, and only one percent of students reported um, no, using no methods of pregnancy prevention. Dietary behaviors and physical activity. Um, so this really asks our students to reflect on, uh, their, um, their body and their amount of physical activity, uh, that they're engaging in throughout the week. Um, and most of our students really, uh, reported in thinking about their, their body image, um, saw thems- saw themselves at about the right weight. Middle school students, um, were more likely to, um, report not doing anything about, about their weight where, um, high school students were, um, more, uh, reported higher amounts of actively trying to lose weight. Uh, and, um, I would wonder if some of that has more, has some to do with engagement in sports as well um, as you, um, grow through, through the ages, um, on that. Um, students were, um, less likely, uh, students were also less likely to be active every day um, as they increased in grades. So, um, students might be active, um, doing other things, but in terms of this question really asked about all seven days of the week, uh, being active. And the trend there was that as students got older, uh, they were less likely to be physically active every day. Uh, our physical activity really fell in line with our middle sex league peers. Um, and our students actually report, uh, less recreational screen time, uh, than our middle sex, than our middle sex league peers. And then the, um, last piece of the, um, reporting um, is about, um, is about organized activities and, um, overall, about a hundred percent of our middle school students and seventy-six percent of high school students reported being involved in some type of after, after-school activity. Um, and I think that this is really important and, um, uh, a necessary part of also developing those trusted adults that we, that we talked about earlier. Um, and as students have more opportunities for connection, um, they are, uh, at a greater, greater likelihood to, um, develop relationships with, with trusted adults. So then the, the, uh, last part here is some of the next steps. Um, steps we've taken, next steps and things that we are doing currently to, um, to support our students and continuing to think about, now that we have this data, what are some of the next, next things we're going to, um, going to do with this? Um, you know, I'm not gonna read through every, every bullet in this, you know, I certainly ask you to, um, be able to take a look at this, but I think there's a number of things to talk about. One being, um, the amount of professional development, uh, that we've worked with, with our staff uh, to, um, really engage in a number of different, number of different categories that speak to this uh, as well as, um, different ways of being able to, um, uh, support, support students in, in their classroom and, um, uh, and, and emotionally, um, a- as a, as a supportive adult. Um, also, some of the steps that we've taken, um, as we, as we started the school year in terms of, um, the student mentorship program, uh, that, 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 that we started at the high school um, this year with ninth-grade students, as, uh, as well as our, um, uh, transition orientation at McCall, I think are all, all necessary components of being able to, um, uh, support our students in those transitions and help them to, um, really, um, gain a foothold in their new, in their new environments, um, at, at their, at their, at their new schools. Um, certainly, the focus on, uh, mental health, uh, as, as well as, uh, as sexual health, um, is, uh, is so important to us um, and things that we are looking to continue to grow on and build upon the pieces that we already do have in place. With that being said, I've now spoken a lot, um, and I'm curious to know what clarifying questions I might be able to help you with.
I will open this up to committee members for questions. I have a question.
Sure.
Um, with respect to, thank you very much for the report. I appreciate it. Um, and then with respect to the next steps and the steps taken, um, I, I guess you were just pointing to P D that we have in place in the district, um, for some of this. But is there a prioritization of, um, some of these next steps?
Well, some, some of the things, some of the things in here, I, I've, I've added as things that were, that we are doing and have recently added. So it's not about, so some of them aren't really about priority to, uh, to add as we have already added them.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, is that, um, does that answer your question or I'm not?
Um, that's fine.
I can, if I might, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Um, also, thank you so much for this level of detail. I think though it is obviously sobering, it, it's quite helpful to have and I appreciate all these steps that you've got in place. It looks like there's a lot of really great work happening and, and I'm thankful for that. So I'd just like to know from you, you know, we've, we've added some positions in the district, but given these numbers, are there still needs that you see? So just as we think towards next year, you know, would, and I'm just throwing things out, would another counselor make a difference at this level or that level? Would another school psychologist, would an additional guidance counselor, would an additional social worker, what? And it's okay if you can't answer that right now, but I'd just like you to start thinking about that, cause it's important for us to know kinda where you're seeing the needs are as, as we think about next year.
Well, thank you, Seamus. You know, I, I think it, um, hasn't gone w- without saying that, um, we have really been on a plan to continue to build on our social-emotional support in, in, in the district all over the years. Um, I would hesitate to say that any one survey equals we need to bring in X number, X number of, um, any, any position. Um, that being said, um, you know, I do think there are things that we're continuing to build on and as, uh, as we get further into, um, into, into the budget, I'm sure that will be communicated um, as to what, what are the areas that we can best continue to build on.
Thank you.
And I guess just to clarify my question.
Sure.
Um, I think it would just be helpful to understand what's already in place and which are like next steps. So that was.
Okay.
I just didn't, I didn't understand which was.
Uh, fair enough.
Already in place.
Fair enough. Um, what I can, what I can do is I can break that out for you, um, and make, and make sure to give you some more clarity to that.
Thank you.
Dr. Hackett, were you going to follow up with something?
No, I, I wanna make sure everyone has a chance to ask questions, but yeah, I do have a couple of comments if.
Uh, sorry.
Mr. Nixon?
Um, yeah, so, um, and I don't expect answers on this tonight, but some, I, I'd be curious to know more about, if I go to slide twelve, um, approximately half of high school and middle school students report feeling they have a trusted adult at school that they can talk to about a problem. I'd love for us to be really proactive and say how, what that number should be. And I'm assuming that that number should be a hundred percent, feel they're comfortable, that someone, you know, that they can go to. And I'm, I'm drawing a blank. There's a word for this. We've made some investments and some changes at the high school so that our students, I think, are more likely to find someone that they can go and speak to. And maybe we first started that under Wind Block and there was an acronym for this. I'm looking at Jen, but she's not gonna help me remember. Say it again?
Adjustment counselors?
No, no, it's not adjustment. It, it, this was something, my gosh, this was probably eight or nine years ago. We tried to establish some time. This sort of predates what became Wind Block, but there was an opportunity to carve out some time so that students could have some time with a teacher that maybe wasn't one of their actual.
So like an advisory block?
Kind of like an advisory. There was a name for it. I can't believe I'm blanking on it. Um, but it, uh, my understanding is that it was, it was intended to sort of to address this issue. And I think we've attended to this since then in some sort of meaningful ways. I'd, I'd be interested in knowing, and that's there. I just have to go back and look at the previous reports. Uh, this hasn't registered with me before. I'd love to know if we're sort of stagnant at the high school, if the numbers are changing. But because I know at least we've made an effort at the high school, I don't know that we've really talked about this much at McCall. And I guess I'm just surprised if the numbers, it says, um, it says approximately half of high school and middle school students. I don't wanna read too much into that. Does that mean that the number, the percentage of students is actually the same at McCall and the high school? Or it's just you add up the high school and middle school population and you about half feel this way? You, you know what I'm saying? I don't, I don't wanna read.
I do hear you.
I don't wanna read too much into that, but if the same, let's say, percentage of respondents felt that way at McCall than they do at the high school, I think I'd be a little surprised about that. Um, and that maybe is an area for us to think about and figure out what we can do to address, given we've, we've made some effort, uh, to do this at the high school. Um, so that's just something I'd, I'd love to understand better if I can.
So, Chris, I can share with you that, um, the percentage of students that identified, that they could identify a trusted adult at the high school was fifty-five percent and the middle school was fifty-eight percent.
One-five? Fifteen?
No.
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five percent and fifty-eight percent.
Fifty-eight. Okay, thank you.
Uh, and, uh, this question was not asked at the middle school in previous, uh, in previous years.
Okay.
Um, our number at the high school in two thousand nineteen was, uh, forty-eight percent.
Okay, so that's a positive trend and maybe that's why I'm reacting, cause I've never seen us kind of compare the middle school to the high school before. So thank you. That, that explains that. Um, the, uh, the other comment, um, it, it, it's a question, again, it may be in, well, I don't know that it will be in our youth risks behavior survey, but slide eighteen that talks about organized activities is really interesting to me. Um, and I wonder how it compares to our, I'd love to know how this just compares to our peer districts.
To our, I'm sorry.
To our, to, to the other districts in the middle sex that, that took the survey. Um, it's a little interesting to me that, that comment that as kids get older, their physical activity decreases, which I'm sure for some kids that's the case, but if you look, forty-three percent at McCall said, I'm involved in, you know, s- sports activities after school. That number actually goes up at the high school and we're, we're a standout in the middle sex district in terms of the number of teams and sports that we've had to create because we have so many students who wanna participate, which is terrific. So, I'm.
I do think, I do think to that question, um, one of the caveats to that was that it was all seven days of the week.
Ah.
Um, and, um, so I, I think with some of them, um, there is the, the building of the, of, of that question and how it's presented, uh, to the students, I think the good news out of this is that our students are very active. Um, and I'd be happy to, uh, get you some information on how that compared to the middle sex region.
Yeah, I'd be interested in just understanding that a little bit better for context. And then, and my last question to you is ju- and, and I love how you framed it at the beginning, that, that our consultant who put this together was pretty strapped themselves because of COVID. So the output looks very different than prior youth risk behavior surveys and not being a statistician, but one of the things I've always heard over the years is the value in the Y R B S is, is the consistency of sort of the questions and how it's being reported back and how we can draw conclusions. So much so that just, you know, changes to one or two questions can really draw a lot of, well, let's say, hand wringing. That has been the case in this district in the past. Um, do you feel, I, I'm gonna throw you a wide-open question. So do you, do you, do you feel that these responses are still sort of useful, given how they've been packaged? That you, you can, you can take this and do something meaningful with it?
Thank you.
Even though you're comparing it to very different results from prior years?
I, I do. I, I think that, um, while there have been some changes to it, I think there are a lot of fundamental, um, similarities, um, to it. And, um, those fundamental similarities really are here to teach us, to tell us a story about all the things our students are dealing with. And, um, what an incredible responsibility that, that gives us to be able to read this story and be able to build on it to support our students and families.
Thank you.
Mister, Mister Hopcroft?
Thank you. Um, so, uh, th- thank you so much for presenting this. I, I read through the material, um, with great interest and, and, and I guess I have, uh, um, I kinda wanna go deeper and higher, um, with this and say, one, I'm, uh, I, I very much. I kind of want to go deeper and higher with this and say, one, I'm, I'm very much looking forward to reading the full report once that's available because, because I had technical questions that I'd like to get, sort of geek out on the data with. But then on a higher level, and by the way, then we can talk in a future meeting. On a higher level, I'd be curious, and again, maybe for the next meeting, if, if you can see areas of past investment that we've made reflected in any of the trends that we're seeing in here? Because that would be very, very validating of investments we've made. But also probably more importantly, if you see areas, just two or three areas of, of priority concern in here that you think need to be addressed, you know, given, you know, kind of where we've been and, and where we're going. Because it, because there's a lot here and, and there's a lot of concerning stuff here. And we can't do everything at once, but it would be nice to see that, you know, I know we've made a lot of investments and to see that progress and then say, hey, if we double down here or if we invest in this other area that we haven't invested in. And when I say invest, you know, either in, in people or, or programs.
I hear where you're coming from. I will also be happy to dig deeper on, on these things, but my, you know, after having had so much time with this data, I think one of the things that was really clear to me is that in a lot of areas, we have made some, some great progress. And that really has been evident in the numbers of the trends. The, I will be very, very blunt in that our students that are considering suicide and making a plan to take their life will always be a priority for me. Our students that are dealing with sexual assault and rape will always be a priority for me. While whether those numbers are going down or not, until that number reaches zero, it will, will always be a focus that I will continue to look to see how we can continue to support our students better on, in this. But more widely than that, I'm happy to continue to have this conversation with you, with you all.
Yeah, and in those areas in particular, I'd, I'd be curious to know what sorts of interventions you think we could put policies or resources, you know, we could, you know, help support to, to address those.
Thank you.
Ms. Hopcroft.
That's okay.
Ms. Bergstrom.
I'd like to piggyback on some of the ideas that, that Ms. Boulonais and Mr. Hopcroft were just asking about because it strikes me that since the 2019 survey, there has been, SEL has been a goal for this district. And we have made a lot of investments in some areas. And it would be really interesting to see the next steps, questions, all of that sort of mapped out with the kind of investments we have and to understand sort of how the puzzle all fits in together. So pulling out middle school from high school and understanding programming from PD, from staff investments. And I would love to see that kind of information over time. And so how, basically just how that fits together and how those investments have been validated by some of the decreases we've seen on the survey in certain areas. It also strikes me, and I am just curious, I don't believe gender queer students were pulled out as a gender category in 2019?
That's correct.
So I was really glad to see that because I think when we start talking about a lot of the issues that you were just concerned about, about self-harm and suicide, we know that LGBTQTI students are more vulnerable to those kinds of mental health issues and have even self-reported that. So I also think it would be, and I'm not sure that this survey can tackle that, but that our district can, is to actually look at our vulnerable populations, not just our gender queer students, but our special ed students, and make sure that we are reaching them in ways that are unique to their situations and their vulnerabilities. And sort of not just applying sort of a blanket approach to that, but making sure we're dealing with the micro approach to that as well. So I was really glad to see that they're pulling that data out. And I guess lastly, my last comment is, I think this is a lot of really good data. I think that there are some other climate surveys and some other student surveys that this district participates in. I'm going to call Jen out here for a minute through MCIA that also tackle a lot of these same issues. And I'd love to see an overlap of looking at the data of the YRBS in relation to the school quality measures that MCIA is doing. Because sometimes I think that when we see some of this data that is so moving, it makes you wonder, what are the problems we're trying to solve? And how do we solve them and how do we get at them? Some of the data that can come to us through the School Quality Measure Survey and MCIA can actually help give us some background on some of the data we see here. So I'd love to see that kind of data integration as well. Not today.
And just a quick update on that, so Lori and I just did a demo with them last week. They're launching a new dashboard that's much more user-friendly.
Excellent.
So we should have our data on that dashboard soon to be able to do that kind of stuff.
And Jen, is, I'm sorry, I'm going to, I'm going to take away from Mr. Levine's show for a minute, but is that?
It all ties together.
We're all one team.
Is, is that information going to be, is that dashboard going to be publicly available? Or is it still just internal to school districts in the, in the pilot phase?
So it is their intention that it will be public. I don't know the exact timeline for that, it should be this year.
Okay.
They're not in that pilot phase anymore, they're just in the pilot of this new dashboard. So I think once every district looks at their data, then it will go.
But internally, the, the district administration will have access to that?
Yes, and then the intention is that anybody can have access to drill down on those questions.
Great, thank you.
Is that data for this year, for 2021?
That, it's the survey they took in the spring 2021, our students take that survey. And so we'll be able to do correlations between some of the topics on it.
Any further questions? Dr. Hackett, coming back to you.
Thank you. And again, Jason, you know, I know how hard you worked on this and how many conversations we had and how we kind of, you know, really the central office team pushed you on some questions and really just trying to think through these data because they are, they're important. They're oftentimes hard to contextualize. We were talking about students who actually answered the specific question that was asked. And, you know, there's always concerns around, for us, as you said, that the problem with this kind of data is we don't know who these kids are, right? So as a superintendent, as a father, I think about the fact that we have a number of students who have attempted suicide, contemplated suicide, or some other serious mental health condition that I only hope that we do know who they are, and I bet we probably do. But I want to know the, the raw number and I want to know that every single one of those kids we're aware of and that we're, that we're working with, and we can't do that with these data. So I, to, to some of the earlier points, to me, this is a lot like MCAS from the perspective that it's, it's, it's useful from a programmatic evaluation perspective. I think that, and Jason and certainly, you know, we had this conversation around, you know, what are the next steps with this? And I think that expanding our data and looking at other sources of information would be important. I would really like to be able to kind of see what we're seeing from other, from other data sources that we have available to us. And then I think that we, you know, need to, and I have, I'll speak to this a little bit later, but, you know, really start to get at that question of what have we done? What do we think has worked? What are we not sure of? Where are we putting our resources? Because what you've listed is a lot. And it's, and it's great and, and I can already see how some of these things come together or address very specific groups of kids, right? So I think my only worry is with all of, not just in this area, but as a school system in general, we oftentimes try to do too much with not enough. And then we're not really sure how it, something started or where it landed or whether or not, you know, just that whole notion of really checking back in. We have so many partners within the community. You're on every single board in the Eastern C board, I think, related to mental health issues. And I just want to really make sure, because it is so important, that when we're talking about budget and we're talking about investments of time and resources and money, that we know that we have the best, what we're putting forward gives us the best shot of having something that is coherent, that is understandable, you know, and that it's really targeting and hopefully getting at what we want to be getting at. And I often think about this from the perspective of, of just asking kids what works, right? I mean, you know, sometimes we, we get, we ask them all these questions, we throw it into percentages, not you. This is what we do, right, in public education? And we come up with percentages, we come up with numbers. These represent kids, right? So I wonder, you know, if some kind of next step for us is a, a more, a deeper dive, for lack of a better term, because I hate that term, but a deeper dive into trying to think about what in this is concerning to us over time that maybe is reflected in some other data that we really ought to start focusing on differently or more? And really trying to think about how we get at that from a, from a longer-term perspective? Because I, you know, you're one person and, you know, you've got, as we've talked about, your nurses, psychol, school psychologists, adjustment counselors, health and PE. I mean, you have a lot of responsibility under you for a lot of people who all kind of touch on this stuff. So I, a long way of just saying, I think that, you know, from my perspective, this is kind of a launch point. It's always kind of a red flag, it's always kind of a, you know, programmatic view. And the other piece of this, I just want to say is that, you know, the other way to think about these data is to say that 99% of our middle school students have not had alcohol in the last 30 days, right? You know, 98% of our middle school kids have not used an inhalant in the last 30 days. And 98% of our middle school kids have not had prescription drug use in the last 30 days. So, you know, and even at the high school level, the fact that 91% of our kids have not used marijuana in the last 30 days. I mean, that message I think is important for kids too, right? You know, just that whole messaging of, if, because kids may think that the numbers are higher, right? That everyone's doing it and that's not the case. And how we message that for kids is important. And, you know, it's also, it'd be interesting to me to ask staff some of these questions too. How many students do you think have done this or have done this or have done that? Just to see what our staff, what the perception is of our staff around what our kids are dealing with. I mean, the counselors see this data, anyone who wants to see this data can see these data. But, you know, teachers know their kids, they know who they are. And when you start putting these percentages on a group of 25 kids in a classroom or 100 kids on a caseload, you know, I, I think that it'd be interesting to see how, what teachers' perceptions are of, of what's happening with our kids. So I also would just say that, you know, it's tough coming out of the pandemic year, going into this year to, the trend, the trends on every day, on any data are tough right now. And that, that's, you know, I think we're going to have to be cautious this year as we go into, into planning that we don't treat this year as a baseline. This, this, you know, this data from last year really isn't a baseline. And we're going to be recovering from what we went through last year for, you know, a period of time to come. So like we've talked about enrollment and maybe that has shifted and maybe with a different landscape enrollment, maybe we need to rethink or relook at the, you know, studying that more. I think we have to think about any kind of data around students in kind of the same way and staff in kind of the same way, right? That we're kind of recovering still and, you know, we, we need to make sure that we take kids from where they're at as opposed to worried about, you know, where we think they ought to have been at this time this year. Let's think about, and I know teachers are doing this, where they are right now and what they need right now to make sure that they continue to make progress. So I, I really do appreciate, this is tough data to look at. These are tough conversations to have. I will say that, you know, I've been in other school systems in the Commonwealth and I've been in school systems in Maine. And in some areas, the numbers look very familiar to me, right? This is, we're not alone in dealing with this and our kids are not alone in dealing with this. And there's no cause and effect stuff. There's not a program because we would have implemented a program if we could implement it and then say, oh, you know, we know exactly that this program made us this much better.
Absolutely.
I think we just have to make sure that we continue to work at it, ask the right questions and try to find ways to support kids. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your hard work.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we will have an update on the FY '22 budget with Mr. Peter Rowe, our interim finance director. And Dr. Hackett.
Thank you. We, we've sent you a chart, one chart to look at, but let me just open it up by saying what we wanted to focus on this time was the other expenses last time. The high school committee reported on our payroll projections, reporting that we were spending within our, our personnel lines and that we hope that we can continue that for the year. On the other expenses, which is about 7.5 million in terms of the general fund budget, the largest component of that is the, the funding for private and collab, private schools and collaboratives, the tuitions for students who we outplace, kids who are, who have specific learning, emotional and other issues that we don't serve in district. There's some other areas, some other larger areas in that non-salary budget, including transportation, including some consulting services that are also within special education. And for the most part, our, our transportation from the patterns we've seen this year will be within budget. And the other material supply, legal services, those kinds of things. Again, we expect from at least the trends we've seen so far that they'll be within budget. The two areas that we're concerned about are the private school tuitions and then secondarily, some of the other contracted services also within special education. This chart focuses on, specifically on the budget and expenditure projection for private and collaborative schools and, and the students who are there. We fund that service from three major areas. And so the, the original budget, which is the middle column here, really the column on the left, the numbers on the left, is from the general fund, the largest number, 2.15 million, supplemented by the circuit breaker funding, which is the money that we get from the state for our high-cost students as a, as a partial reimbursement for the prior year's cost of, of that group of students. And the third area is federal individual, Individual Disabilities Act money that we get from the federal government through the state. So the budget that was planned for this year was just over $4 million. Largest piece was in the general fund and that number was growth from a year ago. And when we look at the revised projection, and so that's, as I said, just over 4 million. A revised projection, general fund's the same, circuit breaker's essentially the same. There's a little noise in getting the final number. The IDEA grant has been reduced some for this year. We're getting the full funding, but we had to set aside some money for a particular focus of, a group of programs that we need to go through staff training. But we're able to supplement that from some underspending of the same grant from a year ago, which the federal government has extended the deadline on. So that essentially supplements that so that we have 4.1 million, a little more than revenue that we actually had planned on. The problem we face is that we have projected costs for 61 students currently in place. That's just over 4.8 million dollars. So it's a significant gap, almost $700,000 in terms of the current population that we're looking at. And the, the further evidence that we're seeing is that we have cases that are under review, complicated issues where we're dealing with placements that might happen between now and the end of the year. And, and a broad estimate of those is that potentially if we were to find ourselves outplacing six to nine of those students, we could find ourselves in a situation where we face another half million dollars potentially. It could be, you know, obviously it's a range and we don't yet know because those, these are expensive cases. So we could be. facing about a million, two overage in this account. And that's obviously significant. And on a $58 million budget, it's really not a number that we can make up with, by taking action within other areas of our, in our budget. So we need to be looking for other sources to help us with this. So this is really the, the big message as we look at what's happening. It's within the services for a population of kids that's grown significantly in terms of outplacement, and, and unit costs that are quite high.
Right. Just to, is, to add to that, I want to be clear that I happen to, and I think Peter does the same thing, work from, please get me the worst-case scenario first, right? So that we can know, to the extent that we can know, and again, that's six to nine additional potentials is, is a range, and we don't know where that will end up landing. But, you know, I, I always want to know, what's our worst-case scenario? And then how do we, how do we manage that, and can we manage that? I mean, the short answer to the question is, we, we, we can manage that number for this year. As we know, we have not taken into consideration ESSER funding, one, two or three in this, in this revenue projection. We have not taken into consideration any potential ARPA money that we might be able to get from the, from the town's allocation. And we've also not taken into consideration the potential to expend current-year circuit breaker funding, which you have smartly not done for many years, as well as, I believe, about a $325,000 special ed reserve account that the town holds for you, which you smartly took care of years ago as well. So it, it's not a matter of, I, I don't want you to look at the number and think the sky is falling. It is definitely a challenge. But the challenge that we are concerned about is the, is the multi-year challenge. And the reason why we will continue to have conversations with town, town hall, and, and the finance committee at town, select board, and anyone else who will listen about the ARPA funding is because we don't want to expend all of our ESSER funding going in this year, because we do have a window of time to, to expend those funds. I believe it's 24 on both, or 20?
23 for ESSER.
23 and 2, or 24.
Right.
So that is critical for us, because if, in fact, these numbers hold, and let's just say that the tuitions have gone up that much, this is, this will be a year-over-year increase, netting out the fact that we have students who will be aging out, and we'll have to factor all that out. So how much of a year-over-year increase is hard to know, especially going into next year. I do think we'll have a better handle on that going in FY24, which is not necessarily helpful. But I guess the point is that we need to protect those funds that we are able to, to use in, in multi-year budgets. And again, you know, neither Peter or myself feel like we're in a situation where we need to lock down and go into any kind of a freeze, you know, because there's a lot of money in, in town. We heard it in town meeting the other day, right? There, between ARPA from the town, and between what we have with ESSER, between circuit breaker, you know, there's money. And the, the money that is there is intended to get us through all of this stuff. That's what it was intended to do, right? So we just really be, need to be judicious in how we spend it, and how we think about it, and how we plan for it, and hopefully, you know, help other people understand the, the, really the need for us to, to be thinking that way. So if anyone has any questions around this information, I will also just point out that the, you know, the, the only change from the last time you saw this is the addition of the potential six to nine students that could get outplaced, right? It was 4.8, and it was 4.8. So even though that bottom number, the 1.2, is breathtaking, it's not, it's only because of the additional, you know, numbers that we, just trying to make sure we're giving ourselves some room for, to be safe.
Is there any clawback cost savings opportunity with any sending districts with some of these kids? Too early to know.
Um, it's too early to know.
Okay.
Yep.
Does this anticipate the state fully funding circuit breaker in that estimate? Or is that a lower percentage of circuit breaker?
So it doesn't anticipate any circuit breaker money that we'll be receiving this year. And then we don't know, I mean, as you know, the law says 75% is supposed to be funded. That has been true the last couple of years. You know, a few years ago, it was not true. So that obviously is helpful. We also, we know that because it's extraordinary cost, the circuit breaker is based on, we should receive additional circuit breaker funding going into next year, just based on the fact that these numbers are up. So, so there'll be some offsets.
Can I ask, how much of the, the overage, you mentioned we have, we, there's money in town, but a lot of it sounds like one-time money. And, and so I'm curious, you know, I thi, I think you also mentioned that the tuitions have, have increased at these, these schools. And I suspect that perhaps the numbers of students that, that need to be in out-of-district may be higher now because of the pandemic. Do, do we expect this to, to resolve itself in three or four years? Because fewer people will need out-of-district placements? Or do we think that trend of higher tuition is going to drive this, in which case our one-time money won't cover it? It'll be more of a structural issue? And my, I'll just throw out my one other question, which is this, on the six to nine, is, is the 566 at the nine level, or the six level, or the, somewhere in the middle level?
It's in the middle.
Okay.
I really looked at, it's probably in the seven range, yeah.
Yeah. But, but so if we spend our one-time money, do we still, do we then run out of one-time money? Because tuitions are just going up, and the, the combination of those two things?
So to answer your question, first question, there's really obviously no way to know that for sure. It's, it's not as much the issue of tuition, individual schools charging more tuition and that going up, as it is raw, raw numbers. And potentially, and I don't know this, I'm going to say it, it could be also the case that we have more expensive placements happening, as opposed to collaborative placements, which is the bulk of our placements. There are some residential placements that, or more expensive programs that could, that are happening, too. So, you know, I, I think that it's going to be a couple of years before we know where this lands. I just think that, again, we have to plan for the kind of the, how do we, how do we budget this out? This is a two- or three-year problem, right? Because, so how do we make that money last as long as we can to feather out this increase, which will be in that eventually, potentially, a general funding increase? How do we feather out those increases with federal money and what we know we have available over the next two or three years, so that we're not getting into a fiscal year where we're, we're trying to find a million dollars just, just to, to deal with tuition costs?
Thanks.
Mr. Brady?
Do we have any sense on IDEA if with the current administration, there's going to be in, any increase in that level of funding? I, I had read that, you know, supposedly IDEA is going to be fully funded for the first time ever. I'm not, certainly not holding my breath on that. But I was just curious if there's been any, any indications there, if that funding will increase, if anything, or significantly?
Yeah, I, I don't know. I mean, I'm, I'm cautiously optimistic, given some of the, you know, potential, but I, I don't think we know yet. I, I don't.
I don't know. I don't know. And I think, Mr. Hupfrock, getting back to your, kind of, your thought, it's, the budget starts early before we have some set idea, kind of, direction. So we do tend to go with worst-case scenario. We do see some trends right now, which I would say are directly related to school closure and pandemic. And I don't know how long that impact is going to be felt. Every year, we have parents who select, as is their right, to have, send their students to private schools. And we refer to those as unilateral placements. And so every year, there is some percentage. This year, it's a little bit higher. And I think that is absolutely, my hypothesis is that is directly tied to school closure and pandemic, and parents being unsure of what public school was going to look like this year. We've also seen an uptick, every year, the OSD rates are set, and we factor in approximately a 3% increase into that total. But schools have the right to, private schools, out-of-district schools can set a budget increase. And so what we're seeing are, if you look at the OSD rates, it's pretty colorful with what are projected increases for some schools. I also think that kind of on the heels of YRBS survey, which I was joking with Jason, that he could go before special education in the budget, because it ties into it pretty, pretty significantly in terms of some of the intensity of needs that we see. And I think that we can't factor, these are all factors. The question is, you know, how do we take kind of a best guess effort? So Peter did come down and warn me that we were looking at a, at 1.2, and I said, I'm really happy that I have a mask on tonight, that you can't see my look of, you know, what happens. But I do think we have to look at worst case. I think we have to kind of plan for that. I think the other piece that Peter and Frank, we've alluded to, but the impact of some of the staffing shortages that we are feeling is directly playing into some of the out-of-district placements and compensatory support. And that, that does matter. So we, I don't have hard figures on that yet, but I will say to you, I, I, I sense some of this. And again, that ties into the unilateral placement and what happens, what that cause and effect is.
Thank you.
So I guess next steps for this going forward would be some of what we've been talking about then. It would be thinking of sort of characterizing what we need to do with, deal with now through one-time funds. But I think my bigger question is, is, is there a larger base that needs to be built into our operating budget moving forward? Because if, if it's not just one or two years, but we're seeing more students going to out-of-district placements, it may not be likely that they come right back to us either.
Right.
Which would affect, you know, maybe a higher operating budget in these areas than we've seen in the past. I think special ed department's done a really nice job at building our in-district programs, and being able to service a lot of our students' needs right here in our, our home district and our home school. And I think Mr. Nixon can talk historically to that a little bit. But in the past, we'd seen higher out-of-district numbers, and then we're able to actually keep our kids here. But if we're going to see that rise again, I think that should definitely be a consideration about, an increase in our bottom line.
I, absolutely. I mean, I, what the next step for us is to, let's roll these, let's roll these students forward a year. Let's see who might, who might be aged, aged out. Let's see what, whoops, let's take these, this worst-case scenario and, and really plan for, what does this look like? If all these numbers hold, it's kind of like the exercise we did with enrollment, right? If all these numbers hold, what do we look like next year? What does it look like the year after? And what's, just, just based on current rate, based on current placement, just looking at age, aging out, hope that we get a percentage of those kids back. But we have to know that worst-case scenario, not just for this year, next year, and the year after, even potentially the year after that. And then I would suggest that as we go through the budget process, we, which we will talk about in a second, we have to, we absolutely have to increase that operating amount. That 2.1 million dollars that you saw is the top revenue source, which is in our operating budget. We have to figure out the right number, percent increase over a two- or three-year period that puts us in a position where, at the end of the one-time money, we can manage that following fiscal year.
Right. Because those students might still be with us in out-of-district placements at that point.
Correct. Correct. Right, right. I mean, the, the good news is the compensatory services are probably one-time source of, of expenditures.
Right.
You know, because it is compensatory, and at some point, that ends, doesn't continue. And then I think, you know, as you have said, and I know that Pam and Special Education Department, and, and you as a school committee have done just a great job building out your in-district programming. And, you know, we got, maybe sell that a little bit harder, and, and work a little harder on, you know, letting parents know what we have, and hopefully getting them back. I do think there's a, there's, and Pam mentioned it, I, I think there's a, a component of this that was so much uncertainty going into the school year, that people just were not willing to wait, and, or got very concerned, because it was not an easy year for anyone last year, especially for students who were receiving specialized services.
Right.
So, so absolutely, you'll see that as part of the budget process.
Thank you.
Can I just make a multi-year planning observation? So we're having a conversation about costs, but declining enrollment will also have a legacy impact on things like Chapter 70 coming back to us on the revenue side, because that will affect our foundation budget calculations. Even if it's just a one-year blip, one-year blip still has a big impact on the three-year rolling average. I see a lot of people nodding. So we don't know how that's going to turn out. One, one blip will have an impact. Two blips will have a deeper impact. Less revenue just means longer bridge.
Right. It, it, it's, the good news of that is we're not heavily dependent on Chapter 70.
Say it again?
But the good news is that we are not heavily dependent on Chapter 70 funding.
Not heavily.
But the problem is, the cumulative effect of all these revenue sources either going away, or expenditures increasing, is it comes out, it, it, you know, it nets out into something that's still a problem.
Right. I mean, the operative word is heavily. There have been some years where we've been happy to see a little more Chapter 70 come in than what we had estimated. And I think actually in Dr. Evans' first year, I think it was 2016, 70 actually came in a little lower than what we had projected. And we had to make some adjustments.
Right.
Just depends. In, in any given fiscal year, you know, something else could yet happen this fiscal year that's going to also put some operational constraints on us, perhaps. This one sort of fits into a box.
And obviously, we're not alone in losing enrollment, right? So I don't know what the state, and that's a good conversation to have with our representatives and our senators around, what is the plan for, you know, dealing with that, the enrollment issue that every school system is facing, every school system's facing. In some school systems, the, the impact is going to be significant because of the amount of, that they rely on Chapter 78. So particularly poor communities. So I gotta, I have to believe that's part of the conversation. And I would just repeat once again, the state is sitting on about $2 billion of ARPA funding. I don't know what all the constraints are, or the parameters are, but I would be expecting that we will start to hear what those plans will look like, you know, either through, through the budget process as we move forward.
And just a last request, please, to keep the special ed reserve fund as not a budget item for figuring those funds out, but as the sky is falling budget. I think that's how school committee established that fund initially, as, as the backup for when we, when we really did get to the end.
Yep.
And not be able to fund that. I just wouldn't want to see it, it, once it's gone, it's gone.
Yep.
It's, it's like ESSER, it's like anything else.
Right.
So I would hope that, even more so with that particular fund, because it's Winchester unique.
Right, right.
That we try to maintain it that way.
Can I weigh in on that?
Yes.
So it, I agree with the sentiment, but in fact, the way the language was voted, both when it was established and when we, we changed the structure of it, so we no longer have to go to town meeting.
Right.
It is explicitly limited to unanticipated and unbudgeted expenses. So the idea is, we're prohibited from relying on it for budgeting for next year. So it's really meant for, well, the kinds of things we're talking about now, right? The unanticipated out-of-district placement, present-day, present fiscal year constraints.
Right.
But I also agree with you more broadly.
Yep. So if there are no more questions on that, we did provide, the two new guys provided you a budget calendar that we pulled from various sources that may or may not be accurate. We're really, truly, we don't need the feedback tonight, but we are looking for your feedback so we can put this together in a final, final form. Again, you know, and we also have a, a new acting town manager. So we're all trying to kind of figure this out as we go. You know, I think we have, it's, it's within a decent, probably, the, the timeframe we have is, you know, plus or minus. But if you could, please, just take a look at this and get us some feedback on it, and we can bring back another draft at the next meeting. We just wanted to get this on the table today for you. So if anyone has any comments right now or feedback, but this is really very much a, here it is, help us.
Did you want me to share any comments now, or are you going to wait?
Sure.
So I appreciate you putting this out there. I think I was the one who had asked at the last meeting to kind of get a draft out there. So this is good. You can start getting some comments back. A couple of comments, just on kind of nuts and bolts and process. One may be more important than the other. So our schedule did slip last time, just due to COVID, and we had, among other things, like postponed town So um, our schedule did slip last time just due to COVID, and we had, among other things, like postponed town meetings. So we were all, town was sort of cutting ourselves a little bit of slack. Um, the bylaw actually requires the town manager to submit her budget no later than February 15th. So our practice for many years has been to actually vote our budget um at the end of January. Typically, the last Tuesday in January, so long as it then gives uh the superintendent time to pull that information, get it to the town manager before the end of January. So just the way those dates shake out now, that Beth would only have about four and a half days to get that together. So I was gonna suggest we look to modify, tweak these dates so that we're still, we're voting the budget at the end of January and allowing for, of course, you know, the public hearing, a snow date on the public hearing. Um, I would ask, uh, you know, Dr. Hackett, for you, as you continue to sort of build a relationship with the leadership team and sort of ponder, I mean, given the conversation we just had and, and maybe subsequent fiscal year impacts, think a little bit about what kind of messaging you'd like to be bringing to the table to school committee. In previous years, um, and, and sort of an important point I wanted to make is that it, it, this is not really, it's not been too heavily scripted each year. What I mean by that is in some years, we've had literally every principal from every school, Ms. Kirby will remember this, we had elementary principals come one night, right? And then we had sort of middle and high school. And each principal was sort of afforded the opportunity to talk about the things that would really be essential for their school to thrive. But add it all up, there was no way we could afford it all. But it was an important opportunity in some of those years, I think, for the school committee to understand what the needs were. And it was also important, because then whatever school committee budget is voted, goes to the finance committee in town meeting with a broader context. So it, it sort of says, these are the things we think are most essential. And to underscore how essential these things are, look at all the other things that are actually not in the budget, that actually took a lot of attention and discussion. But in other years, particularly as we were running up to the operating override, we were deliberately trying to run lean um, and, and didn't really want to waste, if I can say it that way, you know, and didn't want to waste sort of the time. So we just kept it to a very sort of shorter, more succinct presentation. So I would just encourage you to give some thought about, you know, how narrow or, or how narrow, how deep you want to go. Um, the committee has always welcomed whomever you want to bring to the table. And if that's every principal, or if it's a representative, you know, it, it just sort of really should be a reflection on kind of the circumstances, you know, you think that we face. And then the other observation that I just wanted to make in here, and it's, it's semantics, but I think it's important. Um, there is a reference to budget advisory meetings in here. So a little bit of historical perspective, um, up until about 2016, the school committee would vote a finance subcommittee, sort of the inverse of what FinCom does. FinCom has an education subcommittee. And these two groups sort of work together as the budget gets developed um on the superintendent's side. That process, I think, really served us well. Those are posted meetings. Um, it allows others to come in and sit and listen if they want to. And then when the superintendent's ready to sort of present the budget and the school committee votes it, historically speaking, we, we had sort of a, a good bolus of people who kind of understood what the issues were, what the discussion was, questions from FinCom and so forth. Previous superintendent came in with a slightly different perspective, went with a different model, um, and we didn't use that subcommittee model. Um, and I feel like the consequence of that was maybe some information was lost in the process. So I'd love to hear, you know, from Dr. Hackett, sort of what his experience has been at other districts or how he might presume to move forward on this. I'm a real big advocate, and we have a policy that permits this. I'm a big advocate for kind of going back to the subcommittee model. Um, and that typically is one or two members. Um, but because it's a posted meeting, you know, anyone can attend and sort of sit and listen and take notes. Um, and I think, I think it's a consequential decision, um, given how that sort of frames the discussion. Thank you.
Sure. And I'll just say briefly, I mean, my experience everywhere I've ever been, um, is that the, I mean, you have two significant responsibilities. One is finance and one's policy. That's it by statute. You kind of do that and you hire some people, including me, or, or this position. So I, I, you know, I, I think it is, and I've, I've always worked with a finance subcommittee of the school committee. Um, you know, just naturally, it's, it's a great way for um us to kind of have that, both the input, but also I think every time we do anything around the budgets, an opportunity to educate people, right? So when we can start to spread that out and educate more people to understand the issues, then people aren't surprised when we get to the final budget, wondering what's in it and how do we get there. And I don't think it has to be either or. I mean, I think Dr. Evans, um, having that, uh, the, you know, whatever that, and I've have heard a little bit about it. Um, we had some conversations around it internally, but uh, budget advisory committee, it could be something like that. Or, I mean, certainly, it, it makes sense for us, again, in the interests of educating and getting input and feedback, um, to involve a group outside of elected officials and hired people as well. So, um, you know, my, historically, um, like, a, a group like PISC would be a group that I would look to, to have an opportunity to kind of present, here's where we are, here's what we're thinking, here are our goals, big picture. You know, here are the challenges we face, just so we can continue to, because then that goes out to the parent groups within the town, uh, within the school system. Um, and really just continuing to communicate and try to get that feedback. Um, so I, I don't have a preference in terms of, I have a preference. And I would strongly advise that the school committee appoint a, some kind of budget or finance subcommittee, because it is your major responsibility under law. Um, and there are, there are those who, who have more time to devote to that, to try to do that with a full committee. You know, our meetings are probably, they're, you know, in my opinion, they're, they're long enough. And so we start going into budget season, um, it's just a lot of time. And, um, so I would rec, I would definitely recommend that. And then, you know, we'll internally talk about what are some other opportunities for us to bring some people along. And if you have recommendations or thoughts on that, I would be, love to hear them.
Mr. Brady?
Just to follow up on Mr. Nixon's point, I think he makes a great recommendation. I would just add that, you know, I think as closely as we can work with the finance committee, um, that'll definitely get us a better result, as someone who was on the finance committee last year. In some of those meetings that did happen, um, I just think having more frequent meetings and just having more of an exchange back and forth, I think will really benefit us as we move towards the end of the process. So I, I think certainly having more formal um subcommittee, but also having some more informal meetings that might only have one representative from the school committee. Um, I think that gives you some more flexibility as well.
Right, good, thank you.
Okay. So next, we will move on to the superintendent evaluation and goal-setting process. I was going to ask school committee if we could take a little three-minute to five-minute um break.
Good.
Second.
Yes, okay.
I'd have it.
Okay, um, we are back in session at 8:25 PM. And we will proceed with the superintendent evaluation and goal-setting process. Dr. Hackett?
Thank you, everyone. Um, so tonight, what I was hoping to do uh with you is somewhat like the YRBS uh presentation that you just heard. Um, it has been a, um, it, it's been an interesting start to any one's school year, regardless of what, who's, who you are as a superintendent or in, where, where you are working. Um, but I would, I would just have to say that I feel, um, I feel like I know this, I've really started to know this place and this community in a way, more quickly than I have felt that way in different, in other communities. And I don't really know why, um, other than there's, there's such a, a large community civic involvement in the, the town level, um, all of you and everything that you do and what you're involved in, that I've just met so many people so fast through just the normal course of business that you would normally do, um, that I just, you know, I certainly a long ways away from, it's from knowing what I need to know, but I do feel somewhat grounded. So that's good, for me, anyway. Um, and just thinking through, um, we had this conversation as we did the, the school committee workshop. If you recall, we went back and, and looked at the beacons and had a discussion around the be, the beacons and what do those mean to us, and what do they mean at all? And what would be our, you know, what are the ones we have questions on? What are the ones we're not really sure belong anymore? Um, and we did the same exercise, um, both Dr. Alan Emma and Ms. Kirby and led us through as a, as a leadership team back in the summer, in August, um, through a similar process she went through. And kind of when we got to the end of it, uh, it was very helpful conversation. It was very eye-opening conversation. Both the leadership group and you as a school committee had a lot of similar questions and a lot of similar concerns about what does it mean when we say this? Um, that, that began to then feel like we can't, my hope was that we would be able to build off the beacons and do a district-wide strategic plan. I don't feel like we can do that in the same way, because I think we do have to really spend more time this year looking at the beacons, but also, you know, do we, do we, is that the framework we work from? Or do we want to start with a different framework? Or, you know, how, how do we want to treat that? That document, we went through a lot to get there. Um, and interestingly, administratively, there aren't a lot of people on the leadership team who were part of that uh process and don't, they know of them, but they don't, they weren't really deeply involved in it. And we're also, you know, we're, we're really moving into, hopefully, um, more of a transitional post-pandemic period. We've learned a lot about, um, you know, our practices and, and what our kids need, as we heard tonight. Um, I just think, um, you know, it may be time for this year to be a time of really kind of gathering data. And I say that in the broadest sense of the word, uh, and really kind of rethinking about what is our vision, uh, although I think the vision that's included in that document is, is very strong and, and very good. But, you know, what do we value? And then where do we see, where are our goals? Because we're, we're coming out of this period where we have to have a goal, you know, necessarily a dedicated goal, one of three or four, specifically just dealing with COVID. But because you've, we've done all that work. You did all that work before I got here, I did it somewhere else. Um, those protocols are in play. Um, and I, you know, our people know how to do it. Uh, it doesn't mean it's easy, doesn't mean people aren't having, you know, a hard time with it at times. But, um, you know, it's, it's time for us, I think, to, and you as a school system, my perspective, to really start thinking about that shift into what's, now what, and where are we going? And, um, so, and I, you know, I am also aware of the fact that this is a two-year interim position as a superintendent. I tried to think through this in a way that was meaningful or can be meaningful to my time here and my time with you and wherever that ends up going, but also to put you in a position where, if it goes in a different direction, that at the end of these two years, you have a framework. And that's really how I've kind of really, this is how I presented it tonight, in my thinking about it tonight. So this is truly a draft. I do want to spend a little bit of time just walking through the evaluation process, for those of you who haven't been through it. Um, and it is, you know, it is a little bit new. Um, and there are some nuances with it, um, just dealing with, uh, from last year into this year, from, from the department. So I won't read all these bullets, but it, you know, you're probably all aware, in 2012, there was a new educator evaluation process put in place that actually replaced a process that was put in place in 1995, I learned today from our local archivist. Um, spending way too much time on the department website, apparently someone did. Um, and, um, that process came out of Ed Reform. So you're all familiar, the five-step cycle, the self-assessment, goal-setting, implementation, informative and summative evaluations. Um, one of the things I will say, just on the front end of this, is that I can't, for me, a self-assessment is more a self-reflection, because it's really about what have I learned so far? What do I think you are all been, you know, you're telling me and what the needs are of the school system versus how have I done so far, right? So the self-assessment, this is not that year for this, for me. Um, so I treat it really more of a kind of an entry reflection. Um, and then we're supposed to have, um, in this, this was in, in 2012, at least four goals, professional practice, student learning and two district goals, develop collaboratively. And then the school committee, more importantly, is not required to evaluate superintendent on all of the indicators and elements. So there are four standards. Um, you do, um, you do evaluate me uh on the four standards, but not all of the indicators um are included in that. So the model system got updated in 2019, um, and it removed the student impact rating. If you remember, that was a part of the initial. If you remember, that was part of the initial rollout of the, of the evaluation system. And it put it into the student, one of the standards, I'm not sure which one they put it into, but it, it actually did, the, they were indicators developed that reflected impact on student achievement within the standards and was not treated as a separate rating. This year, there have been focus indicators for teachers and administrators that were put out. In fact, we did, Jen led and we did a workshop with our school leaders around those focus indicators and had a conversation around that, setting up the evaluation process for our staff this year. And three, the recommendation is that three to six goals are kind of the range that they were, would be looking for anyone to see in this process. Again, this is, you know, these are guidelines, they're not, they're not directives, which is another conversation. And that they should be related to the focus indicators. So this may or may not look familiar. These are the four standards, along with the indicators and some of the scriptures. You know, so instructional leadership standard one, standard two is management and operations, three, family and community engagement, and four is professional culture. The focus indicators going into the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, you can see on the left-hand side, there are the focus indicators for administrators, curriculum instruction, environment, H R management and development, family and community engagement and cultural proficiency. And then for teachers, similarly, they actually align really pretty closely to the administrators just based on the difference of the rubric for the most part. So these are the focus indicators for administrative evaluations, including superintendents. And those would be the ones that from a kind of an assessment on the evaluation tool and the rubric that, that I would be focusing on. That doesn't mean you would not necessarily evaluate me on other elements of the rubric, you know, because clearly there are pieces of this job that are pretty important that may or may not be part of the focus indicators. And we just got done talking about one of them, for example, finance and development of budget. We also have a fairly significant building project portfolio on the way that, you know, would, may or may not necessarily be represented in these focus indicators, but it would be something that, you know, you would be evaluating me on, hopefully, because I will be doing it. So in, if you recall, prior to my arrival, January, February of two thousand twenty-one, you went through a process, workshop process to realign the timeline for the evaluation. I really love what you've done with this. I think it was smart for a lot of reasons. I've always found the timeline for the evaluation process to be artificial and just not, didn't really have a good flow to it. So the timeline was that in July, the superintendent would do a self-assessment. Then August and September, analysis, goal setting and plan development. Late September, implementation of the plan. Step four, February and March was a formative assessment evaluation. And then step five in June would be the summative evaluation. So essentially aligning with the school year. You also, part of the conversation you had, and you remember it better than I do because I wasn't here, is that, you know, the, the challenge in and around the March elections and how that timed up and when, you know, you might have had members leaving as before the summer evaluation was done. And you really put some, I think, some good thought into that and how to, to manage that. And then the last box here is extenuating circumstances may delay one or more steps. I would suggest that coming on new is a, an extenuating circumstance and would recommend or for your consideration, adjusting the timeline in this way. So self-assessment, again, it really is more of a self-reflection for me. And then right now, as we start to really do analysis, goal development and plan development, late November, begin the implementation of the plan, probably should be late November, December. Not that the things, things have not been already happening, but in terms of the formal plan. And then I think we, then we go back on to the timeframe. I, I think, I don't see any reason why we can't jump back into getting caught back up on the last two steps. I just put this here just to remind us that we have had some conversations around this. You know, I have not necessarily tethered my thinking around goals to the beacons, but again, I, I do think the general sentiment of the vision is, is where we should be. And obviously, healthy balance of wellness, we heard a lot about that tonight. Some of the other indicators here are important, but I don't refer to them directly in the goals or would not plan to unless you would want me to advise me otherwise. So tonight, all I wanted to do was put in front of you my current and best thinking around goals. You know, some of, some of this is my observations of, in the time that I've been here. You know, the, the, the good news, as you know, is this is Winchester is an outstanding school system. I mean, this is not a job where, and I've had jobs where I've had to go in and, and schools were in a different place, and it was truly a, a whole different set of challenges to try to, to bring things together and to kind of right the ship, so to speak. That's not the case here. You know, there's, there is nothing glaring. I mean, by any measure, we perform well, our students are well-supported, the resources are strong. I know we heard some, some tough data tonight, but we're not alone in that. So as I kind of think through the general themes of how I think about the work that I might be able to do with you, a, a lot of it comes down to kind of focus. It comes down to kind of precision and, and really being able to do things better, because we're in a better place to begin with. And I think I've said before that I've never been in a school, well, one of the school system, but it was in Maine, where the state assessment wasn't the driver for every single goal, every single plan that was put together was, had that element of how do we get these scores up? That's not the case here. The case here is that we have pockets and of groups of students or certain areas where I, we have the opportunity, and I think to a certain extent, kind of a gift, to being able to focus on those specifically, because our general population performs well, right? And so that's kind of what I'm talking about in terms of precision. I think it's really looking at data in a way that other school systems don't have necessarily the luxury of looking at it and being able to identify specifically target populations and have really good, rich conversations about what are their needs? How are we doing? How do we know how we're doing with them? And then, you know, more importantly, I think, just to start to, and which is work you're already doing, is to really kind of build that portfolio of, of, of achievement metrics or assessments that you're providing. And I say assessments and, and data in the, in the broadest sense of the term, because it's everything from trying to measure student engagement to achievement data. Certainly, the PBAs that you've been working on, that is very exciting work to me. I think that, you know, you've done a great job with that and your involvement in the consortium has been, that's the kind of work that I think we should be talking about at Winchester. Because again, we don't have to, we're not as concerned about the general population's performance on the state assessment. So I think that, you know, as we continue to move forward, one of the things that I've, I've related to data, I think we need to think about how we can measure student performance in multiple ways against the standards. So we have PBAs that are being built, that are tethered to the standards, that the assessments would be data that we could be able to measure student performance against the standards. That's complicated work, it's hard work. I applaud you for taking it on. Not many school systems really, in my, in my experience, really try to figure out, you know, how does our own curriculum and our lessons tie back to standards in a way that we can really measure students' performance against the standards? And do it in a way that, that has a system approach to it. So there's a lot of work to do with that. You know, teaches, the work that you got done last year during the pandemic was actually pretty extraordinary. I mean, I, you know, a lot, most of us were in survival mode. The fact that you were be able to continue to maintain that work and actually move it forward was to your credit. So looking at kind of what is our overall assessment system in, including MCAS, but more importantly, we've been implementing DIBELS starting last year into this year, the PBA data we can, that we have, that we can, you know, that we can look at. And maybe there's some other things that we want to roll into that. I mean, the, the great conversation tonight around the Y R B S is, you know, how do we want to, how do we want to measure that part of our students, which is a critical part, the social emotional part? And are there other data points that we already have that we can just kind of bring into it? And I think that kind of corralling all this stuff and making it meaningful and attaching it to standards so that we can look at a specific standard and be pulling data from three or four different measures? And then be able to make a more informed decision about how our students are doing? And both, you know, just in their overall development and their academic achievement. So the first goal is really, you know, part of any kind of entry, just to continue meeting with stakeholders and really trying to learn the community still. I've met with a tremendous amount of people already, I've got, I have more to go. You know, I've been just super impressed with the level of involvement and the thoughtfulness and the support that, 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 you know, Winchester enjoys here for, for their schools. So that would be a continuing, ongoing goal for the, for the year. And again, just really trying to learn about the system. And it ties into kind of going back to that conversation about where are we with the beacons and what's the future of the beacons, which is, ties into goal number two, which is develop a strategic planning framework that includes a vision, mission and core values as a foundation for a comprehensive strategic plan. So I would see this as more of a year-long project to be able to get into May and June with what a framework looks like. Maybe it is the beacons, maybe it's exactly the same vision, maybe it's exactly the same structure, or maybe it's something different, that then can be used to build out a more comprehensive strategic plan moving forward. So this year, build the framework. Next year, and the year after, years after, actually being able to build out or plan out a three, I would recommend a three-year strategic plan. I think getting past three years is difficult, I think three years is difficult. That provides meaning to the work that we're doing, that people understand and have a understanding of the direction that we're going. You know, as, as part of that whole process, I would have a goal here of developing recommendations and implementation plans for organizational systems in key district performance areas. You know, for example, try, and we've talked about this, one of the consistent messages I've heard and you hear it in every school system you ever in is communication, communication. But really trying to build out a cohesive communication plan that looks at district-wide communications, what is the information we put out? When do we put it out? Why do we put it out? How do schools put out their own communications from newsletters to whatever it is that is coming out of the schools, including parent organizations? I mean, I candidly want to have a policy conversation with you about what goes into our newsletters, right? Because I mean, there, it, at times it can be too much, and at times it's, may or may not be necessarily what we want to be putting into a newsletter. And the, the interesting relationship that all school systems have with their parent organizations is, in some cases, the parent organization truly is its own standalone entity. In some cases, it's very much integrated, so it's a parent-teacher organization where teachers are part of that group. And that's not the case here. And I just think we have to have a conversation about it and be clear about it from a, from a planning standpoint, so everyone kind of knows, okay, here's kind of the rules. And when you get this from this particular parent organization, you know it's from them. It's not necessarily our endorsing it. And there's just so many opportunities here, and we continually get questions about, can we put this in a newsletter? Can we put this in a newsletter? And we can't put it all in, you know, and so kind of what do we endorse as a school system? You know, generally, town departments, groups that we work with regularly. The representation from PISC is a great example of, you know, those groups that are representative in PISC would be groups that we work with regularly, that we would more than likely support sending information out. So that discussion, I think, is important, obviously, somewhat of a small part of a cohesive communication plan. But when I say communication plan, I'm talking about things that we talked about tonight, like budget. What's our budget process going to be? How do we communicate that? When do we bring people in? And it's not one-way communication of just getting information out. It's how do we systematically continue to try to get feedback on what we're doing? And really try to get honest feedback about what we're doing? And how do we, what do we do with that information? How do we build it into our planning process? The next bullet here is to, to develop a framework for a comprehensive student data system tied to standards performance on multiple assessments. That's, if, just, I already kind of covered that. But, you know, I think that we have a lot, there's a lot of data, there's no lack of data. So what data are we going to pay attention to? And, but more importantly, how do we bring it together in a way that we can actually run reports, make sense out of it and inform instruction? I mean, if we are doing assessments that, if we're doing assessment right, then the data that we get from those assessments should be used to help teachers make decisions about what they're doing in the classroom. And then most of that data should be coming from the classroom teacher in the classroom. That, that's, that is our best data point, is the professional judgment and expertise of our teachers as they work with kids and trying to figure out where they are. That's not, in addition to that, kind of layered over that is, you know, we all need to kind of generally be headed in the same direction. So how do we, how do we provide some common experience? And the standards are the, the way that we do that, right? That's what we tether to. So then how do we measure that? So we make sure that all kids are, are moving or, or showing growth and development against the standards that we've identified. And, and the PBA processes set that up, I think, really, really nicely. It's not a short-term process. It is going to take, it has taken, and it will continue to take time, because it's just a whole nother layer of work that we're taking on locally. You know, we're not buying an assessment off the shelf, we're building our own. And we still have the responsibility, as we build our own, to make sure those assessments are valid and reliable, right? So that is a level of technical work that a lot of school systems just don't take on. And then also just, you know, kind of developing some unified procedures and protocols for central office functions. You know, it, we're coming out of pandemic shutdown and, and there's been a lot of transition, obviously, and change in the central office. We've already come back to you, you've supported the position operations manager, for example. And I think that, you know, as we continue to do this work, just really looking at our business practices and how we report information, what information is important to us? How do we want to report it? What do we want to have access to? You know, I think that from my perspective, the budget process is a great time to really have those discussions and kind of nail that down. You know, and I think that the more data we can provide in a meaningful way, not a data dump, but that is actually meaningful for the process of whatever is we're doing, whether it's building a budget or building a strategic plan or going into the goal four, you know, really having a, a set understanding of the data that we're looking at that, in what that means to us. So four, I have to develop a framework for continuous improvement through plan engagement and evidence-based programmatic review cycles. You know, the, the, the good news is we have a lot of resources, the challenge is we have a lot of resources, right? So tonight, you know, when I looked at the presentation on the Y R B S and the slides that Jason provided at the end, two straight pages, slides of everything that we're doing, it does, you, you can do too much, right? At some point, and I'm suggesting that's true with this, with what Pete presented tonight, but you can do too much and you can get asked to do too much and you can get expected to do too much. And, and if you're doing everything, you're not doing anything really well. And I think one of the biggest challenges in, in a, in a school system that is high-performing and, and, you know, fairly well-resourced is, is figuring out what you're not going to do. More importantly, than figuring out what you're going to do, what are we not going to do? And what are we going to say no to? And maybe it's no for right now. It doesn't have to be no forever, but it may be, you know what? This is in our plan, we've, you know, and we're thinking about that in year two or year three, and here's how we're thinking about that, and here's how it ties to the budget, and here's how it ties to everything else, in a way that's cohesive. So I just have some bullet points on, on that particular goal, because it has been one that I've thought more about. You know, I think individual, there's a balance between teacher autonomy and academic freedom and also making sure that everyone has a piece or are part of the overall system and that we're providing support and resources for our teachers and staff. It's also, you know, one of the things that we've talked It's also, you know, one of the things that we've talked about too, is that individual schools are, have made and have historically made, and probably should make, decisions about programs that they're implementing without necessarily thinking about or having a larger conversation about the entire school system, right? So, I'm not going to give you examples of it, but there are a couple of things that I've, that come to mind for me of, that got implemented, but it was kind of implemented in isolation, and was a discussion here, but it wasn't necessarily, well, what are they doing at the middle school level, or what are they doing at the elementary school level? And how do, how do we, is this something we believe in? Do we think it's effective? And how do we kind of spiral it up through? Not everything has to do that, but how does it connect, right? So, I think that, in some cases, it's kind of slowing things down and, and having a deliberate process about how do we decide if we're going to implement a program? Because we could implement programs all day long. I mean, you know, there's, there's no question, there's no lack of ideas, and there's no lack of good ideas. But I think really trying to be thoughtful about how, what we support, how we support it, and what the sustainability of it is, one. And then, two, at some point, we've got to be kind of checking in on how we're doing and whether it's effective. And, you know, the, to the extent that you can set that criteria up on the front end so that everyone knows what the evaluation criteria would be, and you already met, you know, you're collecting that data from the beginning, the better off you are, because it just clarifies the expectation. And obviously, that ties into budget, it ties into, you know, time, and all kinds of other things. So, I, I do think that, again, I think that because we're, we are a strong school system, we perform well, our kids are, we're pretty well-resourced, our kids are, you know, really fantastic, you know, I think we have the opportunity to really get more precise and more accurate with what it is that we are doing. So, that's my, again, my current and best thinking around goals. This is truly a draft. I would, you know, hopefully, I would love to have you get me individual feedback, some feedback tonight's fine too, but, you know, this is a lot of information you're seeing for the first time, and with the goal of me bringing this back to you, it might be a tough turnaround, given that we bumped up the 23rd to, was it 23rd, to next week, potentially, we're going to talk about that later, but, you know, to bring it back to you a little bit more fleshed out, and with some action steps and some of the things that you would expect to see as part of a goal process.
Are you looking for some feedback now? You want it individually?
I can, however, as it pleases the committee.
Mr. Nixon, did you have a comment?
So, I really appreciate the thoughtfulness that goes into this. There's a lot here. So, my first reaction is, I don't want you to be oversubscribed in this, because sometimes you can have so many goals and so many sort of subsets of goals that it can be difficult to kind of make meaningful progress on any of them. Your performance thus far doesn't suggest that would be the case, I should just be clear, but, you know, this is a very ambitious list. So, I'm going to read, there's three things on here that really strike me. Goal number one, on the one hand, this is the stuff any new superintendent would be doing, but what I really like about how that sentence ends is it sort of establishes the real purpose of some of these conversations and engagements. The fact that you really are looking to better understand the culture of Winchester, in a sense, who we are and who we wish to be, is, is really fundamental in those conversations that I know you're continuing to have. I love that it's here, and I think it's absolutely appropriate to be goal number one, given that you're, you're, you're new to the role here in Winchester. I'm going to skip goal number two for a minute and say, goal number three strikes me as basic but really fundamental stuff in running a railroad. And you got to get it right, or the trains don't run on time. And it's all good, I really like it. And then goal number four is sort of how you fine-tune the railroad, how you fine-tune the schedule, and it's also really good stuff. I would challenge you that I think goals three and four have real value without goal number two even being on that slide, because I see three and four as being really important, fundamental stuff that, that can speak to how we can do our job better, more efficiently, how we can empower more people in this district, and with real outcomes. My reluctance to goal number two is, it's a little unclear to me what a framework really means, but, and I think, and, and goal number two is just such an ambitious thing, right? To set out on and require so much engagement from the community, and we do need to get there at some point. I feel like goal number two makes this an almost over full plate. But, if I'm reading between the lines, if you're, if you're looking for some signals from the school committee, I go back to the beacons, you've mentioned those several times. So, from my point of view, because I was here when those were created, the beacons were recreated, like, for a purpose, right? It was at a time and a place, and, and to good effect, I think. To the extent the leadership team is sort of telling you that maybe it, it doesn't resonate, these beacons don't resonate with them as much as you might, you know, expect, then, if you're looking for a signal from the school committee to be sort of open for some change and open for new ideas, I, I would certainly support that. So, I, I think the beacons were helpful, but there were specific reasons why we sort of went through that exercise and why those beacons in particular sort of came about. That was a time and place, you know, in the past. I would, I would be strongly in support of goals one, three, and four, but I would say, if you were really ambitious and wanted to have another goal on this sheet that is, that is essential, I think, to some of the conversation we had earlier tonight. We talk about multi-year planning, we're, we're hearing a lot from the finance committee and discussion at town meeting. We, we have not only a coming significant override for Lynch, but there will be a need for an operating override. Will there or won't there be a capital component to that? So, I think it'll be really important for leadership at the schools to really understand and, and articulate well what our needs are, not just for this fiscal year and the next, but really over the next three or four years, and, and to build relationships to sort of make that happen. I, I think that is, that's a real heavy lift, because we did a lot of work on the school side, both administration and school committee side, to message, right, to articulate what we needed and why, what was essential and why, and then everybody just lifted really hard to advocate for that. But not so much, like, everybody retreated to their sandbox and said, I want this and they want this, but we really worked together, in my opinion. I thought that came through very strongly in the vote. So, it was an override for the schools, yes, but for DPW and for police and for fire and for capital. And I think, I think you could be very effective in that way if you continue to make progress on goal number one, which is just continuing to build those relationships and meet the people that you're going to need to meet. And I'll shut up.
Thank you. That's helpful, thank you.
Mr. Brady.
I really liked your point about how, you know, the majority of our students do perform well, and then, of course, that gives us a great opportunity to perhaps even better assist those that don't. And so, I would just ask that, within your goals, taking a look at the data, you kind of hone in on some of those students, and obviously, I don't expect you to say, we're going to help this group, that group, this group, and that group, because again, I think you said, well, you can't do it all, you can't do it all at once, but I would ask you to look at it, talk to your leadership team and figure out, you know, talk to parents as well. Where should we focus? Because I, I think that's really important, because again, we do have that opportunity in, in a district where eighty, ninety percent of students are doing really well. It's really negligent of us to not go full force after that last twenty or ten percent that might not be doing as well, because it's manageable and it's doable, but I think we have to name it and we have to focus on it. And again, if we don't get there, that's fine, but I think if we don't get there because we didn't talk about it and we didn't focus people on it, I think that's a much larger problem than if we didn't get there because everyone gave their very best effort and it was a really challenging problem to get there. So, I would just offer that.
Okay. Yes, thank you. Thanks.
Mr. Hopcraft.
Sure. So, so I like these. I think there's a, a lot that having conversations, improving communications, and, and streamlining the, the train system, as, as Mr. Nixon said, I think that'll go a long way to, to making things a lot easier for a lot of families. So, so I do like that. I will say, I, I hear Mr. Nixon's point about goal number two, not having been part of the, the initial beacons thing and understanding that it was designed for a different, you know, time and different circumstances, you know, I do find it a little bit confusing. And so, if there is something short of the full process, but even a translation of, your, your translation of, of how to modernize this, or, or maybe a broader process, but I am concerned, a little bit concerned about, you know, Mr. Nixon's point about, you know, biting off more. I'd rather do fewer things really well, but, but I think at some point, we should have that on the agenda too. But, but overall, I like this.
Okay. Thank you.
I, first of all, thank you, because this clearly reflects that you've already begun goal number one and had those conversations, not only with community members, but with teachers and administrators here in the district, because I don't think you'd be able to put something together that reflects our needs and our goals as well, had you not already begun number one. So, continuing to do that and refine that as we go along, I think will be really important. I, I also like Mr. Hopcraft, I hear what Mr. Nixon's saying about goal number two and, and actually, some other points under goals three and four, but I also wonder about us thinking about this as a singular year process, and I always worry about that when we establish goals for school committee, and that because it's tied to the superintendent evaluation cycle, that we think of these as one-year goals. And I wonder if, as we move forward, if, as you refine these, if you could help identify for us what you see as multi-year goals, and which goals you think are able to be accomplished within a single year? Because I think it's important to have both on our district goals and your goals, because, to your point, if we're doing our jobs well, if the trains are running on time, if we are creative cohesive plans, then they, they, some of these goals should take us a couple of years to do well. And lastly, I just wanted to say that I really appreciate how, through all of this, it's tied to gathering information from multiple sources and data, because I think that in school districts and, and education, sometimes we can always be chasing the next thing, but it's coming back to looking at our own data at a local level. And to Mr. Brady's point, understanding what our, our students in this district need and understanding how to reach those, those groups of students or families or community members that might need, that we might be able to reach, teach, social emotional goals better. And we can only do that by putting together the information that we have about our community.
Thank you.
So, I concur, I concur with, with what each of the committee members has spoken about. I do, I, I appreciate goals one, three, and four. I also like goal two about just, about developing a strategic planning framework and thinking about how our plan, our strategic plan ties into the long-term over three years, and how it also ties into our budget, budgeting process over this year, and then phasing this out, phasing in, over the three years. I think it's important, looking at our business practices, on how we report our data, and what kind of data can be used in a meaningful way, so I appreciate what Ms. Bergstrom is saying about using multiple sources and finding multiple sources of data to be able to assess, to inform our assessments of our current practices and what we want to do. So, I, I thank you very much for what you have put together and the items that you have laid out in goals three and four as well. And I also like the idea that, no matter what happens over our two years, over our next two years, this brings us, this sets us up down the road for having a strategic planning framework going forward, so, that we're thinking ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, and thank you for the feedback. It's, it is, that's very helpful. And looking at goal two, let, you know, let me take another run at that, and maybe, maybe the strategic planning framework, dot, 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 something else other than, that includes a vision, mission, core values as a foundation for it. Maybe it's just that, again, that run-up to kind of dealing with the beacons, coming back and saying, you know, I think if we do this, this, and this, you know, it's, it's a shortened process, I don't know that we have to go through a full community-wide strategic planning process, but at least being able to kind of deal with that question with some recommendations about what it could look like moving forward might be more, more realistic and reasonable. Because I do think it's hard to do three and four without thinking about two, right? So, because it, eventually, you, you do kind of want to tether back to it. So, let me rethink that, and then I'll build this out more with some action steps and some timelines. And, you know, I did try to phrase it so that there's a kind of, it is time-bound, at least, to, so it's different, to develop recommendations and implementation plans for organizational systems is different than, you know, totally implementing, right? And being done with the implementation. So, I tried to think about that over, okay, here's kind of what I think year one looks like, which sets up year two for a different goal that would have implementation, what we've learned, and directions that we might go, so, but I, I appreciate the feedback. So, I will take another run at this. And please feel free to call me or shoot me an email or whatever.
So, Madam Chair, good discussion on the goals. Can we go back to slide eight for a minute? Because I did, I wanted to say a word about focus indicators. So, my, and maybe it's changed, because if it has changed suddenly, I wouldn't have known about it, but I think the last round of, couple of rounds of superintendent evaluation we did, there were about twenty or twenty-one focus indicators across the four standards, right? So, like in management and operations, the last tool we used there were five, family and community engagement, I think there are four. There is, I, I just would, I, it would be helpful for me to understand, how do you see us working together to settle on what the focus indicators would be for your evaluation? And I'm asking it that way because in some prior years, the superintendent has sort of determined this, these will be the indicators you're going to use. That's not always ideal when kind of the purpose of the evaluation is to, you know, not only highlight somebody's success, but you want to identify areas for growth. The MASC has a white paper that suggests that school committees and superintendents should, should sort of mutually agree on what those should be. So, I'm putting you on the spot, what your philosophy is about that. I, I feel like we have, our, some of our prior evaluations of superintendents have not been as fulsome as they otherwise might have been, had we had that opportunity to talk about what the focus indicators would be.
Great question. I, you know, and I just would say that, that I've always worked from the perspective that whatever this, my goals are as a superintendent, are the goals of the district and to a certain extent, or at least of the committee, that, you know, I can't get to those without your support, but also, they don't, if they don't mean anything to you and they're not moving you forward as a school committee and us as a district, then they're not very helpful. So, taking kind of the same approach, when I, it's, it's not, to me, it's not the indicators that are the problem, it's the rubric that's the problem. The rubric and how it defines what proficiency is, and then on either side of proficiency, how that gets defined, like, some of the time, is, is difficult in, to work with, but this is complicated work, and, you know, people have been studying the superintendency for a long time and leader, educational leadership for a long time, and, you know, it's, it is messy. So, I, I don't have as much problem with, you know, if, if, if we were defining the indicators in the context of the goals, which is kind of the hope, they should be connected, then I feel like that's the best way to bring it together. I mean, there's just certain things on here that, you know, I mean, I show up and that is just my responsibility. I mean, I don't get out of bed without having to make sure that, you know, law, ethics, ethical behavior, you know, fiscal systems, financial systems, I mean, those things are just part of the role. And, and if, if you don't have a base level of performance on those, then it's really kind of hard to get to the other stuff, right? I mean, I think that management and strong management and good management- right? I mean, I think that management and strong management and good management has to come before leadership to a certain extent. Because if you can't make the trains run on time, then that's all you're doing is trying to figure out when the trains are coming in, and how come they're late, and what are you going to do about trying to get passengers from the, one train to the next? So I think that I would focus then. Having said that, I would expect that you would be evaluating me on those indicators. If there's some specific things that should be identified, that I would want to know that, so that we're all clear about, you know, you have a certain expectation around the fiscal systems, for example. But then, you know, really just trying to go through and look back at my goals and then come back into this rubric and say, okay, here are the things that I would think are the focus indicators based on my goals would be the next step for me. And that's what I would bring to you next.
And it's only six to eight of those that are up here, correct?
Right. Six, right. Six to eight.
And that's what we evaluate on, are those six to eight?
Correct, except for the fact that if I don't pick fiscal systems and that doesn't go well, you're going to evaluate me on it. Right? So it's kind of everything, I think. But it's a matter of, of kind of priority and, and weight, right?
So I bring this, I bring this up because this has tripped us up a little bit in the past. I, I think some people would agree around the table. So I, I might suggest if, maybe a way to, to, to take this a step forward be, you know, ask you to think about that. And the next time we talk about your evaluation and the process, if, if you have thoughts around what focus indicators you're leaning towards, I would just encourage you to share that with the committee. Maybe have a discussion with the chair about, you know, how to present that, what kind of feedback you're looking for. I think what I would like to avoid is getting to a point in the process where we, we get the rubric, you get the document, and then there's just specific, you know, indicators that need to be used. And then the, either the committee or members of the committee feel frustrated that those indicators don't sort of allow the kind of evaluation on, let's say, the things that members thought were sort of a priority, right? So it's just about having some conversation and dialogue to avoid that disconnect.
Agreed.
Am I saying that eloquently? I'm looking at the chair.
Yeah, and that was the first step of this, that was, was tonight, you know, for me. So yeah, absolutely. I agree.
And I was going to just say that, or just interject, that I think Dr. Hackett and I have already started the process of talking about those focus indicators. Maybe not specifically, but we've definitely brought up that point.
Right.
That's helpful. Thank you.
And I would also say, Dr. Hackett, you've invited each of us to have a individual conversation with you about us. And perhaps to Mr. Nixon's point, that would be a good opportunity for us to, to bring to you also, which focus indicators we think would fit with what you're doing.
That would be, that would, yeah. That would be great. I mean, if there are ones that you're, you know, you are, really want to have focused on, yeah.
Thank you.
It's a nice detailed document for everybody to read. Okay. With that, it is nine fifteen. We have building project and facility update, a brief update from Mr. Nixon.
So if I miss anything, I will ask the chair of superintendent to jump in. First of all, I just want to start with the most exciting news, which is the Massachusetts School Building Authority's Designer Selection Panel, which is fifteen people, six of them architects, so write your own joke, interviewed ten very talented teams for the Lynch Project in early, I can't remember now, in October initially, and then narrowed that down to a list of three finalists. That was TAP-A Architects, William Ron, and Flansburgh. And then subsequently had a finalist interview towards the end of last month. And that panel actually voted TAP-A as the finalist to work with us on the Lynch School Project. There was sort of due diligence process that followed, lengthy contract negotiation that involved the MSBA Designer Selection Panel. And then last week, on Wednesday, November third, the EFPBC voted to execute a contract with TAP-A. So this is really exciting. This is a very talented firm. Remind people who don't otherwise know, they were the architects of the Ambrose Elementary School and the Vincent Owen School. They also actually did a little work here in Parkers to get this building ready for the, for the kids at the time for, for VO. Very, very strong presentation. I, I, my own sort of personal anecdote is a, a lot of effort went into these presentations. TAP-A particularly impressed me at the level, sort of the time and energy they put into understanding the site, the challenges, the opportunity in the initial proposal. But then the extra effort that they put in when they came back for the interview process, they were prepared for some pretty tough questions. So we will, of course, be introducing them to the community on Tuesday, November sixteenth. So there's a plug for that. That is at the auditorium at Town Hall, starting at nine AM. That's really just the public session. The, the stuff during the day will be more administrative. And then we're going to do it again at six o'clock at the high school auditorium. At that setting, WinCam will be available, and we appreciate WinCam very much for doing that. We look for some feedback from the public on what items, sort of, or elements they see as really essential to the project so that it's a success. And we'll learn much more in those meetings about what feasibility really means. There's a lot of work that's going to happen here really quickly. But it's exciting. So I also just want to recognize and thank Town Meeting for supporting four important school projects already at this fall Town Meeting. And that's the McCall facade restoration. That's funding for construction documents, not necessarily the work, but we will get a good set of bid documents for that. And then the pneumatic controls project, as you all know, substantially funded through some effort, ESER funds that Dr. Hackett had identified. Capital Planning Committee was really very appreciative for this. And I don't know if we circled back to share with the committee, that given the limited funding we had in the capital and building stabilization funds, this seemed more likely to be looking like a three-year project. And we might bite off year one of year three. But thanks to the ESER funds that have been put forward, looks like we're going to be able to do this over two years and do much more, obviously, in year one. So that's really exciting as well. And then, of course, the Lincoln-Chiller design and spec work was funded. And I'm especially interested in and excited about the funding for the site work at Lincoln, which you all are sort of vaguely familiar with. So something I'm going to definitely work with the superintendent, the chair and Meg on, is finding a way to bring some of that information sort of back to the school committee so you can get a better sense of what's going on there. A lot of deterioration with all the site work, sidewalk, stairs, and so forth. But some real rethinking about what that looks like at Lincoln, so we don't just kind of go back in and reconstruct what's there. So some pretty creative thinking from the team on that, so I'm happy about that. The modular gas-fired boilers have arrived. They're installed at Morocco. I think we had maybe one operational hiccup yesterday, but I think that was just a blip. Otherwise, I'm, I'm assuming that they're going well. I think we're on target to get the bid documents out for the electrical and roof work done at Morocco. In other words, by done, I mean that we would be set up for a, a summer construction. So I'm very happy about that. I, I, I suppose I just take a moment and, and also just say a word to school committees, since we were following the Town Meeting debate last night. I think where we ended, there is a motion on the table to amend the transfer station article to basically borrow the full amount for an important project that's cosponsored by capital. And so that motion that came forward that seeks to avoid a million dollars in free cash, but to borrow the full amount, has certainly raised some questions about, you know, where that debt service comes from. Because it's about twenty percent more debt service. So the Capital Planning Committee is going to be meeting this week, either Friday or Monday, to talk about this. We really need to understand what the select board's disposition is. And so the reason why I'm even talking about a transfer station article is that if, in fact, the expectation is that additional debt service would come from the capital stabilization funds, then the consequence of that is that there's less funds available for capital projects. And that, of course, includes school projects. Although I'm, it, it's really, it's wonderful, frankly, for those who've, you know, read the minutes in detail that we're going to approve here in a few minutes. There, there was a meeting that's in, on the agenda for us to approve today. And we were talking about the prospect of having only three or four projects, you know, get funded at Town Meeting. So we've gotten four out of the way, and that, that's really good news. So just want to thank Dr. Hackett again for the creativity with the ESER funds, because I don't think we would have made much progress there. So it's a mouthful, but it's all good stuff. We're making progress.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, so now it is nine twenty, and we will move on to our action items, beginning with consideration of approval of the MOA with the WEA for 2021, '22. And I just want to thank you very much to the members of the administration and the WEA representatives and the school committee who had worked really hard on this MOA. Any comments or questions? Or I would accept a motion?
Make a motion to approve the MOA as written?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we need roll call on the MOA?
We should, yes.
Roll call vote. Mr. Hopcraft.
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay. Thank you very much. The vote is unanimous. Next, we have consideration of acceptance of a donation of Osmo learning devices from an anonymous donor.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next is consideration of acceptance of an SCI grant of one thousand dollars to the high school Connect and Commit Club, and six hundred fifty dollars to the student council of the high school.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. The vote is unanimous. Next, we have consideration of the WHS PFA grants, which is, but I believe we will take this up at our next November meeting with consensus.
Yes, sure.
Okay. And finally, we have consideration of approval of minutes from July thirteenth, July twenty-seventh, August tenth, and October twelfth.
Comments?
Any comments?
So across, we just need to put pagination on these across the board, as we usually do. For the minutes of the twenty-seventh, page three, there's a reference to schematic design for the carriage house. That should be design development. It's actually in the narrative as design development, but I think Aaron put in a chart, and the chart says schematic design. So we just need to change that typo. Minutes of August tenth, page four, we should change, there's a reference to Morocco bids, looking like they're coming in favorably. That should be estimates. So we should change bids to estimates. We don't have the bids yet. And then lastly, the minutes of October twelfth, the footer, so the document of, the footer of attachments references a survey that Charlie presented to us that night. That should be referenced as a student survey. I think it says teacher survey or something else. So just a minor typo. That was it.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other comments?
Before we move on, I just want to thank Aaron for plowing through.
Absolutely.
She was, she was so excited to get to, to that chunk done and know that she's caught up, and she's done a great job with it, so.
Yes. I was going to say, thank you for all her hard work on this.
And thank you to the chair for her constant editing.
And all ours, by the way. Yes, yes.
So.
I move to approve the minutes with the edits that Mr. Nixon has proposed.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Chair report. I, yes. I would just say thank you to our veterans again in advance of Veterans Day. And just one more repeat of the message from communications earlier today, that with our vaccines that are available for five to eleven-year-olds, please, all of those in our community, we already appreciate your very strong support of this. And we do, we ask that, please do your part to help keep our community safe. And remember that it takes five weeks to be fully vaccinated from the time you get that first vaccine for your five to eleven-year-old. Dr. Hackett, superintendent's report.
Just one item that I, gives me great pleasure to inform you this evening, that we had an eighth bus on the road today. So we have effectively eliminated the waitlist that we've been carrying since the beginning of the school year. My, truly, you know, I feel for those families that have, this has not been easy for, and, you know, apologies that it has been that way. You know, we, we really tried to figure out another way to figure this out, but it just really came down to, we needed the driver. And so it was, it was a relief, I think. It was a relief for me. I mean, I got to believe, other people were relieved, too, to see that bus on the road. So that was, that's it. I'm just gonna, just gonna end on that, so.
Great. And let's see, the next future agenda items, we have building project and facility updates and FY23 budget planning. And any other suggestions in addition to these?
Just that I'll be coming back to with goals.
Goals. Yep. Goals. And then next meeting dates, we have, so next meeting dates, we have November twenty-third is what we have scheduled. I am going to ask if the committee would be willing to move this up to November eighteenth, which would be next Thursday, and beginning at five PM. If we have consensus. And, yes.
Note, as I did, that I'm, I'm not necessarily available on Thursday, the eighteenth, so I can certainly make efforts to be available, but I do have prior work commitments, so.
Thank you.
I also just want to add, I think what, what we will do is a matter of formality for these meetings on the sixteenth. I think we're going to wind up posting those as EF, maybe we'll post them as EFPBC meetings. I'm not sure yet. But I hope, the whole school committee should feel comfortable coming to these meetings to, to hear and, you know, listen and share your thoughts, either in the morning or, or in the evening. We'll figure out how to take care of that from a posting point of view.
Yes, we will. Okay.
I'm available on the eighteenth, if you want.
Great. Okay, great.
Yeah, I'm available for Thursday, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Then our meetings after that are December seventh and December fourteenth at six PM.
Are you commenting on it being December?
Oh, jeez. Stomach just went, my throat.
Did that just hit you?
It did. It really did.
Motion to adjourn?
Yes. That's what I was just about to ask for. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And thank you, as always, to WinCam for your help and support. We really appreciate it.